Alright, everyone. Good evening. Welcome. It is Tuesday, June 25th, right at 6:00 PM. So officially call this board meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call.
My name is.
Jake Carter, Director of the Sprint.
Charles Simpson, Director.
Okay.
Dr. Nancy, the president.
David Martin, the director of the student senate.
And welcome to all of our guests, those joining us in person and online. Those who may be listening later to this meeting. Alright, so let's take us to our welcome message, which Dr. Carter should be joining us shortly. I think we'll have him rated this evening. So these are agreements borrowed from courageous conversations, which other board or committee to stay engaged, experiencing discomfort and being vulnerable, speaking your truth, and expecting and accepting non-enclosure. We, the Taquilla School District, acknowledge that the land where we teach, collaborate, learn, and play is the traditional land of the first people of Seattle, the Duwamish and Muckleshoot people, past and present, and honor with gratitude the land itself and the Duwamish and Muckleshoot tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility for the stewardship of this land, and we strive to work alongside the Duwamish and Muckshoot people who have been living and working here since time immemorial. We further acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. We remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this way against their will for generations. We also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary and involuntary traffics forced and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. As a school district leadership, we pledge to recognize and work against systems that have historically and currently enforced and created inequities among the people we serve. Now, for those who are able and willing, who are like community members, standing close to me, I will touch on this.
We have two republics, four visions, and one nation, and jobs indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so now we move to approve tonight's agenda. Circle of the. All in favor? Right, it is approved. Welcome, Dennis. So good to see you.
After so long.
Also, really glad that you're here. Okay, so we'll move down to our first opportunity for public comment. Just as a reminder, there are multiple ways with which you can offer public comment. One is in writing submitted prior to the meeting. You can also provide for the comment virtually by raising your hand or typing your name in the chat. There's also a stand-up sheet here at the front if you are in person and would like to offer public comment. Is there anyone sign up there? We did receive one public comment, which I'll read now. Sister Jean Courtney Burns, category. I'm a parent of a Taquilla Elementary School student. The school is wonderful thanks to all of the hardworking and dedicated staff and community. I like to advocate for keeping elaborate teacher positions in the elementary schools. Library town is a very valuable aspect of education, especially for children willing to read. Being read to and exposed to new books and ideas through the library can spark interest and excitement for young children. Without the librarians helping to facilitate that time intentionally, I feel that an important aspect of the educational experience would be missing. I appreciate that the board is having to make difficult decisions. The amount of classroom teaching positions that are being cut is alarming, especially as class size has continued to grow during this last year. Please consider eliminating, please reconsider eliminating more teachers from our schools. Thank you very much. Thank you, Courtney. Is there anyone online that would often to offer public comment? There is, of course, a time at the end of the agenda as well. If you'd like to offer anything after our conversation this evening. So now we'll move to our reports section of the agenda, beginning with our student representatives.
So, I'm delighted to meet out our final student advisory board meeting for this year. And what we did is we finalized the entire basis of statements, and we made sure it included ideas and perspectives for people from all the students in the advisory board. So I said on a Google form, and basically what I did is I put all their responses together to make my own final statement. And we made sure to emphasize the importance of inclusivity and equity. And we also had a discussion about whether we should show up to middle school without brought to the superintendent's attention during the meeting. And finally, we recognized and awarded any participants in the meeting for their contributions throughout our advisory board meeting throughout the year. And yes. This is nothing for me.
Congratulations. Perfect. Thank you both so much. Yeah, so, yeah, with that, so, by the way, that was a really fun, I was gonna say, I don't have a comment about the super, the last student advisory meeting, but I'm just gonna state that it was a great moment to see all the students' work come together or three months of conversations. And for them to really take a lot of pride in all of that. So that was just a really, I was gonna say, that was probably the most, the most precise graduation and everything, that was one of the highlights of my year. So this, I want to say that. Anyway, I want to welcome everybody. Thank you so much. Happy summer for the community. It does have a few updates. One is to formally congratulate all the graduates. Hello. At 2024, the class of 2024, it was really wonderful to see all the families and community members there supporting our students. All the purple, pretty, thank you to the board and Mayor McLeod, who was there as well. And then special thanks to the Foster High School administrators and the staff, who, if you saw the event, right? They did all of that. They created all of that. They ordered all of that well in advance. Flying to the machine, let me just tell you. Yeah, even at the end, you know, they're already getting ready, wanting to take the flowers home. I'm like, no. But anyway, they were just, they were really involved. So it was a really great event to see all the students and and all of the wonderful awards that were to happen that night. Just a couple of things. We are in the process of primarying for two positions for the district, but one's been finalized. So I want to welcome one of our new assistant principals at Foster High School, Jimmy Lorca. We just sent that announcement out, and we are excited for him to join the team. So this is really exciting. Just also letting people know that, reminding them that our summer school programming got really scaled back. We took some budget, compared to, we're still doing recovering credits for the high school students and then focusing on our newest newcomers. But that starts July 8th at Castaway View and Foster High School with a three-week program. And then also reminding everyone in the community, we also have free summer food programming beginning at those schools there as well, July 8th. So those of you at Castaway View, Foster High School, you don't have to be in the summer school program to receive free breakfast or lunch. Both will be provided. The times are on our district websites, and the times are also in the schools. And you can also call the front office. And if you need help before July 8th or after in August, we have a list of all of the local areas that actually also are going to be distributing food in our area. We have that list for you. And at a cell in the front, and also all the schools will have that information too. So please, if you know somebody that is needing that food, we have information here to help. Just a reminder, our district offices are closed on Fridays and through August 9th to help with maintenance. Enrollment packets, if there's newly enrolled families and they want to know if the school offices are closed, tell them to come here. Their front offices are closed Monday to Thursday, and we will accept them here. And then around mid-August, schools will be open to receive those as well for enrollment. And then just a last reminder, I just want to thank all of the community members and the parents who attended our budgeted community listening sessions. The last session we held is actually online, so the Zoom meeting is online. There's a page with the session. There's frequently asked questions and answers. There's a little sheet about the budget as well as a letter, so you can send to your legislative group, template letter, so that we can start beginning to advocate for families. And anyway, I just wanted to, again, just wish everyone a really healthy, safe summer for July and onward. So that's all I have. I'll say a quick question on the food service program, which is confirm that that does not have to be a Taquilla School District student. It's certainly for any home for families under the age of 18. Yeah, you don't have to approve anything. You can just go and get an animal. Anyone up to, yeah, from infancy to age 18. And that's actually some of the local areas that actually have food service are actually not in Taquilla. And so there's some in Sea-Tac that's all over this area. So we just looked at the programming that's around us and here. Because some offer starting now and some don't. So I just wanted to put those timeframes up for everybody, and they're available for anybody. So you can go to South Seattle, you can go to Sea-Tac, but there's no point in going to the website. I tried going to the website and finding all the sites. Let me just tell you, it was challenging. It's a little overwhelming. So we went ahead and picked, took the top eight to 10 sites that are really local to our area, and that's kind of surround us. So just wanting to make sure our families have access to food. And yeah, right, you don't have to be a Taquilla School District student. It could be for really anyone that's in need. And that's it. Thank you. Alright, next is our director of boards.
Okay, so.
So, I'm just gonna back up and say a bunch of the senior awards. I actually was, I'm a member of the jury here as well. I was surprised to see a couple of members come. I have actually gone to the online award process for that. It was exciting to see a number of schools get scholarships from them. They raised about $25,000 to this. And there was, I think, four, one from the Senate, got pretty solid scholarships. I'm pleased to see that happen. And then they allowed me to went up on the stage at a rock and just hand out flowers. But I was, it was, we're kind of, I'm still new at this school board stuff. The graduation, it was just, you know, first time I've been in the center at Showler. Because I've always known the ones, attended the ones out here. So many pluses and minuses to work through, but I think overall it's a win. You're never, you're never gonna overcome the weather. I don't know what the mood is of people who plan it, but I hope they keep building on success. I live by Castaway View, so you can always get my observations, because it's part of the route when I take my dog in. Loving that there's brand-new paint job in parking lots, because I remember the principal asking for, you know, better everything. She really met the street, but if we look sharp, it makes it a lot easier to talk to the city council and go, can we look as sharp? And the one I'm gonna keep benchmarking against is Hornback, which has got a lot of curves that are painted yellow. Because I still see lots of cones out, and, you know, people do or don't understand what that means. So we'll see if we can get after them and kind of push their traffic calming processes a little, little quicker if we can. These are all gonna sound tangential, but the southern is the development that's right south of our baseball field area. That will have its opening, it's really cutting, so a bunch of officials are gonna be sure of that. On Friday, I think it's 10:00 AM, I get invited to that, it was involved way back when, so there's reason I know about it. But their instructions are that we should all, I'll be blocking, but we should all park at CV. So I'm hoping that's coordinated with the school district that only knows who it is, or they just decided they're the parking spot. So hopefully it's just us being good to each other on the track process, because there's just not enough to vote by the tune bank on that day. And then the last comment I have is just, I'm just gonna slowly turn this to on this one. Because I've been there 32 years, I know that my kids in my neighborhood play in the streets. And they ride their bikes in the streets, and they run out in the streets, and they have water. Squirt gun fights in the streets, they didn't use to. And there's probably very solid reasons why I put big tall fences up around the school. I can guess at many of them. But they are the biggest and tallest of any of the three elementary schools. It's the most isolating of all three of the two schools. If I'm not mistaken, you can get to the playground equipment in all the other two schools. You can't do that in my neighborhood. And maybe I'm wrong empirically, and I haven't explained it out, but I'm wondering if we should work, and this is for later, as assistant reporter, with the school, sorry, with the city and Parks and Rec, and try to figure out things that I learned from Renton, who found church properties and other properties, and they would actually have park activities right beside it. And then after school was over, they would open up the gates, they'd be responsible for them. People could come play soccer, play on the playground, play basketball on the basketball court. And at X time it gets shut down, I would propose sunset, but if it's nine o'clock, that makes sense to me. And then on weekends, because it feels like there's enough in the school locking people out. If you're on the playground, the wind can't hear, that's a mischief. If not, I say more eyes on the street is security. If people are out on the field, the bad guys are hanging up there, which that's everybody can see what's into it. But right now, I've had experiences where I'm walking my dog in the dark, and I see somebody breaking the channel. At channel locks, breaking the chain, and going into the yard, nobody knew except me. I had to do the reporting now. I don't know if it was a friendly neighbor who just wants to lock the door, or somebody was up to no good. I don't like reporting those things. I like people to feel like they could be there, because it's public. And so maybe there's some way to kind of make it part when we're not using it as a school, and to make it a, you know, one of the schools to secure the kids, because I totally believe there's enough going on around that property that we need security when the kids are there. Just a food for thought. I don't know how to get that on our agenda someday, but I think we should. It's too bad I'm starting the conversation now, because it'd be nice if they had the access for sun, but.
I wonder if that's something we could include in our discussion around kind of a long-term facility plan that anyone would be bringing forward the board to.
That'd be great, yeah. It's just about being smart with the resources we have, kind of how we're going with the boys and girls.
Can I just add something on that? Sure. Just really quickly, just because we were in that square fence, right? That came through as well.
Oh, the other square.
So I'm trying to figure out how we put it together.
Yeah.
And I think through that facility plan, right, because why, so we are in the process of getting bid, we have one waiting for two more, so FYI. But I just want to make sure that, well, because we're talking about safety for that situation for the fence, because we have, you know, interesting activity so close.
Yes.
So I think that's the balance, right? So safety, but access, right? So how do we do both? And there is a process called joint use agreements that you can do with those parks and recreation, because I was able to that in my former job. But it's a big process. So I just want to make sure, because of course, you have the coordinate with the city on, we've done that before, right? And this one, I need to get a look at the face. Yeah. So I just think that's a long process, because I want to make sure, so I'm building a six-foot fence in Taquilla Elementary School, but we won't walk, like, we just have to be really clear what we're gonna do for everything, right? We have to be clear about fencing and access, and then who's responsible, and all those pieces have to be really nailed up. I just want to put that out there. I think that's a good plan, but I think we need to get ahead of it, because we don't want to put something in place. And also, I don't want to go ahead with a fence if it's not in alignment with what we want to do for access, right? So we have to have a whole conversations together. So here you, and I'll put that in there.
Thank you very much. And it may even come down to, you know, our responsible parents that CD knows about in our neighborhood. And, you know, the dad walks out there and unlocks it at nine in the morning, and it's closed at, you know, nine o'clock at night, eight o'clock at night. And just, it's a padlock thing, and he's got the keys.
And of course, we're talking about outside of school time.
Never, Gary.
The issue is the garbage to clean up. That's the issue. That's, it's not the walking, it's the issue of the cleanup, the garbage, that, that maybe the things that we don't want little kids to have access to, and that's the issue.
That's it, that's it, that's it. Yeah, I remember the lost and trash with the soccer players, and we just have the coordinator of the coaches and go look, pack in, back in.
Yeah, thank you for putting that out. I just have three quick things. I was, attended foster graduation, which was always a privilege to be able to pass out empty performances. I think that's a first one. Goodness, because otherwise, you know, that'd be kind of a logistical challenge. But it was just really amazing to, just Washington, the presence of so many amazing students. And I took congratulations also to the foster team, administrative team that put that together. I agree about the Showler Center, definitely some challenges to deal with the sound and stuff to overcome. But when you think about like the benefit, which is that students can invite more people to see this amazing mosque. I think that definitely outweighs some of the challenges, so we just have to figure that out. We had a Saturday session as a board earlier this month. We were able to really focus on our collective board work and establish a few goals, which we still are kind of fine tuning, what those will look like, but we will be kind of putting those forward for approval at our office meetings. So we can keep an eye out if you're interested in what the board has really set for ourselves. Of course, there's the district goals and then board goals that will align with those, but be really about our own work and work together. So excited for that continued work. And then last, we had the opportunity to meet or join a conversation about the potential of a Taquilla promise to support our scholars being able to have access to free, two years of free higher education. And so excited to see what I really believe is a tangible, tangible thing that we can do. It sounds like that would be a big partnership with the city of Taquilla, and it sounds like they're on board to consider what the budget impacts might look like for the city of Taquilla. But seem definitely interested in pursuing that opportunity. So that's really exciting. It was also just really great, Representative Burquist was here, who piloted this in Renton. And so it was just really interesting to hear too, kind of the way that, first, the way that it overlaps with the state's funding, because there is so much state support for students, particularly of the demographics that live within our district. So this would just be kind of a step beyond that to support all students, not just the students that need that extra support in this situation. Yeah, so those are my big things. We'll ask it up soon.
I also attended the student advisory committee, and I absolutely did a job of leading this for the time I'm too. But, and they introduced, that we'll be looking at later, this really outstanding piece of work at Antares Station. So that was a really high-quality product that we'll hopefully look at a little later. So the graduation class, I always like to look at some of the numbers related to. So that particular path, path of 2024, set some, some new records. One of them being the percentage of students that actually got the program scholarship. So this is, this is like a $40,000 scholarship that gives students the ability to go pay tuition for kind of any school in this. Up to, they take the tuition at UW Seattle, and that's sort of sent down, so much here. And this is the first year we've gotten up to the, we've always had like about 50% of the students get it. But this year, it was like two-thirds of the students got it. So that's phenomenal number. And that's, of course, thanks to all the work that was done on the faculty, because they have the data, and lots of, you know, 50% of that money. So anyway, that was, and as a result of that, if you, this is the graduating class with a little lower numbers in diploma, but they got over $7 million in scholarships altogether, which is on a per student basis, which is a new record for the recent long-term gap. So some really great work by our students. And also, the other one that they also did was the one I tracked as a seal of my literacy. So this is students who have demonstrated proficiency in one additional world language beyond English. And we had 42 students, which is about over 20% of the graduating class that can seal about their Jewish. To think that they keep those numbers, I'm expecting that we have one of the highest percentages in that category, because I'm assuming jump on that idea. And so it'll be interesting. We may, the official graduation rates haven't come yet, but this is looking like we may actually possibly actually hit 90% of the first time over 20 years. So anyway, it was an outstanding class of 2024, and we'll look forward to some more records in 2025. Let's see, I did. So I've been following kind of a lot of the conversation around what the legislature is going to be potentially doing. And then in addition, of course, we know this is the last year, so like there's the election for the governor, many legislators, and also the super junior public destruction. And Seattle fans have been following all this. And actually, on June 9th, they published a full section in the Sunday paper about where the governors stand on some of the issues. I thought that later that I wrote to the clients in that, in that edition relating to the fact that we need more equity-based funding. So in particular, supporting the center to build more lack funding or an existing program. And it was, it was interesting that one of the, so the Seattle panel was interviews all candidates, and they, and they will eventually announce their recommendations. But one of the quotes that they had for governor, for the potential current attorney general, Bob Person, who's running for, he's kind of a, I would say, out in favor to be, to run the governor's race. He actually came out with a quote that he's, his administration is gonna be in favor of expanding lack funding. So I thought that was encouraging. And so we'll see how that, how that goes. Let's see, I wanted to, I, Dr. Rosso had, you know, our monthly, our weekly fat thing. There's, I think, a particular one that I want to highlight, and that is, so there's this source for specialized funding called Safety Net Funding, which is, you know, the way the funding system works for special education is. And, but then for students that need above and beyond that, there's this kind of grant program called Safety Net Funding. This is something that it looks like, I mean, I guess it's the final one to turn it yet, but it looks like we're gonna be getting north of $900,000. And just to put that in perspective, last year, we got $386,000. The year before that, we got $217,000. The year before that, we got $2,500,000. So this is a, you know, this is a gigantic lead. I wasn't looking at that before, and we just entered the computer, but anyway, I don't, I don't hear how, how he did that. I think it's important to understand, I mean, it's, it worked well, but I mean, we, we have maybe a few more of those students, but not a lot more. So there was, there was some magic in there about how you put a grant together properly for special funding. And so, anyway, it's not a regular.
And mine is, we have to also thank the CFO, right? It's a combination of things, for sure. And actually, the staff, the professional person staff, who actually helped with the ID, so making sure all of the compliance, because you have that compliant ID, the staff should ask for the money. So it was a lot of work with the staff, a lot of work with CFO, coordination with the special ed directors. So it's just, it's an effort, honestly.
Yeah, but we really, really, we like to have all those pieces together, so that we can make sure going forward.
We'll have a proposal for the calendar for next year, and part of that is a special education report, so maybe it should be included in that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a sentence report, for sure.
And there's definitely some outstanding important things on there. So the other thing that I just kind of found out this in the last couple of days is, I've been very concerned about the theater program at Foster High School. And it turned out that, so we're losing our theater teacher, however, there was a very nice, and I was worried that, you know, the program might just kind of drop on the floor. But it turns out, there's a very nice pass off. So the teacher who's gonna be taking over is the current choir teacher. And I just was talking with him, or emailed everything, and he's got, you know, phenomenal plans for keeping that program in place. It's, they're shipping it from, I guess it used to be a fabs to a club, but it's, it's already organized as a club. The teachers, the students have got together, elected their officers, and so, and they're already planning for two performances next year, which is the same ahead this year. So that program is alive and well, and very happy to hear that, because I know there's a lot of, particularly since, you know, you know, when I see, you see the line teaching program at the elementary. We want, I really love to see those programs like theater, like choir, like band, like robotics, like whatever, that start at the elementary and then grow, and grow, and grow, and just, so there's opportunities for students all the way out there. So anyway, I'm gonna meet with Darren Baldock, I think, is the choir teacher's man, he's gonna take over. Actually. I think it's, it's the bar teacher's hand, he's going to take over and actually, um. Director Kurlor, uh, we might be, I know you have connections and that all that. I was just, I was talking to him a little bit about, you know, what else could we bring from the outside? And he said, you know, maybe some bathroom class and new, you know, so anyway, we just.
Bring in some professionals and new some.
Yeah, yeah. He's open to that, so anyway, there's some, yeah, just really happy that, you know, cause I worried that program was going to lose it. And but that's not the case and the students are into it and want to move forward, which is great. Is it?
All right, so before we move on from the board, the board section, we wanted to take just a moment to recognize our outgoing senior student rep. Um, and so, um, that you, we'll clap here. And also I just wanted to, um, share just a few words of gratitude for you. Um, Dennis, you came in, in what, twenty twenty? Or full two, twenty-two, um, and hit the ground running so hard. I think you, within like your first few weeks, we were at one of the Wausau Conference. And I remember we got there and you just like disappeared and everyone just kept being like, we should, so it's like, Dennis is like doing his thing. And you were, you were making connections with people, um, with other students across the state, with people that are supporting the students across the state. Um, and so you really got involved, not just at this local level, but at the state level as well. And have really, really helped to push and move, um, the work that's happening, uh, with the student advisors around the state. Um, and then here, um, just the work that you've done has been, I mean, I can't even begin to say how meaningful it has been. Um, you got so much like teeth behind this student representative position, um, in a way that I like am just astounded and amazed by. Um, I know that you did a lot of work at the forefront to really make sure that this was a, a, a position that people felt valuable. Other students felt would be a valuable asset as a part of their education. Um, and then you modeled that by contributing in such a meaningful way. Um, so I am just so grateful for you. And I know that, that future of the student representative position is going to be even better because of the ways that you've invested so strongly in it. Um, uh, so thank you so much. Um, I also wanted to give, uh, uh, Dr. Lush, just a few, uh, uh, non-two safety words as well.
So just, yeah, second, uh, I mean, Dennis, from the beginning, you've got that with me, that with you. And you know, and that's what he does, and which turned out to be really powerful. And I kind of disconnected him up to the, to the student network and we talked, uh, I mean, he was on it immediately and just, uh, started talking every day here and there. Which is a great representative and, um, you know, I've been on this for a long time, since student reps from the beginning. And, um, I think Dennis is probably the best of all of them, just because of the connections. How you embrace the connections with this new network around the, around the state. And, um, you know, we, this is the first time, yeah, that I have ever. So we, you know, I collaborated with, um, you know, David Knight, who's professor of education at the University of Washington, or presentation at Wausau. And, um, which I think that's, I appreciate that's the first time that, uh, there's ever been a presentation at Wausau that has a student and professor at the University of Washington. And it worked. So that's kind of groundbreaking breaking and, you know, he did all, I didn't really have to tell, uh, you much. I mean, you just did the research, you actually did this as part of one of his classes and brought his own student perspective to it. And so it turned out really well, we got a lot of good, um, feedback from that presentation. And, you know, and the other thing that I really appreciated is, you know, when you got on and Alex came on, you kind of took him on and pulled him into the group. So I think Alex is, uh, he's well prepared. He's actually just, so you know, you and I are going to do the same presentation with Alex next year.
Okay.
Yeah. So we will continue, we will continue the work until we get some decent funding for the system. So anyway, great job and, and we'll look forward to hearing you, you go into every use of every goal. Yeah, yeah, so we'll look forward to hearing what's, what, what you end up doing and let us know also. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, it's been amazing two years. I really, I think I learned a lot. Um, I think all of you, uh, or all of you that I got to work with, um, were really good mentors. Um, and I really got to know a lot of you, not only with professional, but personally. And I think I learned a lot, I helped like, I, I took away a lot from it and I hope I contributed what I can. Um, and I hope to be back, so yeah, I don't want to say any goodbyes, but I hope to be back.
As superintendent. All right, um, so now if we get a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Second.
Oh, in favor.
Bye.
It is approved. Um, so next we have a few board discussion items. The first is the superintendent contract. Um, so we presented the first iteration of this last meeting. There wasn't really a lot of thoughts that came back, um, and we felt it was pretty good. However, as a result of our, um, meeting that we, our work session that we had on Saturday, a few Saturdays ago, um, one of our articles is around, um, uh, anti-racist practices. And so we wanted to make it more explicit in the contract, uh, around the, the superintendent's responsibility, um, to, to increase, um, our, or continue our work. Um, so really the only big addition here or change, um, is, uh, uh, under the superintendent four point two, um, that reads, uh, superintendent will systematize and operationalize the goals of policy zero, product twenty-five. On raising equity, ensuring the district upholds its anti-racist vision and supports diversity, equity and inclusion at all. Any additional thoughts that have come up since, uh?
I think, uh, I'm newest and I may or may not understand everything I read about. But I may not understand the way we do things, but this seems to be, except for that change, an extension of kind of the terms and conditions we had before. So there's going to be jump or leave or major cutback. We're just saying, stay the course, constantly, um, for Dr. Vindrosa. And, um, yeah, we're looking forward to, um, seeing success.
All right, uh, well, if there's nothing else on that, um, the next is the board meeting calendar for twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, so just a little bit of, uh, what the process for this normally is and please, uh, jump in if I need correcting. Um, it's very likely, um, so typically around August, uh, the board approves the board meeting calendar for the following school year. Um, that outlines all of the times and dates for all of the meetings that we're going to have. Um, last year, we shifted our meeting structure just a little bit. So this, this past year, school year was the first time where we've had, uh, regular board meeting, uh, and a work session rather than two regular board meetings and a work session. Um, we also spread out the, uh, Saturday sessions a little bit, um, so to happen more on a quarterly basis rather than, uh, I think they were happening monthly. Oh, so much, uh, yeah, so they're not happening monthly anymore, um, but they're happening quarterly. Um, and even that was more of like, uh, when we have something collected at the board that we really want to come together and do. So even that was a little bit less structured. Um, so, uh, uh, as Dr. Vindrosa mentioned earlier, um, the team is working on, uh, putting together a presentation calendar. Um, so that at, once we approve the board calendar, or it might be happening at the same time, um, they'll be able to identify what are really the best presentations at the right time across the span of the school year, um, so that we can get the, the, all of the information. Cause oftentimes we might have, like, see a report and then we get told, well, that data isn't out from the state yet, or we won't have that until X time. Um, and so just trying to get a little bit more clear on when we'll actually have the right type of information to have a complete report. Um, that also aligns with board requirements, with legal requirements of reporting, um, and so on. So they're working on that, um, but they tended, this discussion was just to kind of get a sense for folks about how we feel about the meeting structure as it sits this, as it has sat this year. Um, I know that there was some discussion at our last Saturday session about the Saturday sessions themselves, um, just being, you know, difficult. A lot to ask of folks, thinking about three hours of the Saturday, um, uh, it's still an important time to hold, uh, but there's a possibility that we could shift. So just to open that up about maybe how it felt, um, and what thoughts folks have about any changes that we might want to make to the calendar. Those next year.
Just, um, I think we skipped this consent again.
We do.
Oh, okay, sorry. But it's not going to.
Keep motions, but they can then try to set.
Yeah, there's, the, the calendar, I mean, the current time, the, the, I probably was, but the whole person, so.
So from my perspective, I'm new, so I'm still just suggesting to us here, and I don't tend to want to disrupt. But I'm concerned that if, I'm totally okay with the topics and when people are presenting presentations, it sounds like the strategies are good. I know that a lot of things are good, the staff and what they need and that's important. But I also am concerned that, um, we don't have a very diverse board. And I'm wondering if we are data-driven at all, if we actually got out into the community and said, well, would it take for you, if you have a former member of the school board, uh, with the calendar and when we meet, have anything to do with that? And it might be, nobody cares, but they, if they're wrong, then come with what we've got. But I, 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 I feel, I feel concerned that we don't know.
Yeah, I mean, nothing, I don't think we've done anything collective or formal like before. I know that, uh, I know I've had a lot of individual conversations. There was a time last year when we were, um, uh, going to all of the, uh, family events that were happening at the schools and talking to folks. Um, you know, and I, you know, part of actually, one of the reasons that we changed the meeting structure to a degree is to lessen the downtime, um, uh, that folks were spending, that we were spending at board meetings. Um, in hopes of getting us closer to that. Um, so I mean, I think that engagement and honestly, i- if this is something, I know that some of you are passionate about, you mentioned it a few times, same. Um, and I think knowing that, um, you know, the, there's going to be an election for board directors in twenty twenty-five. I think maybe I'd love to partner with you and figure out what we can do to have some strategies around that. Um, I think the calendar probably certainly plays a piece of that, um, you know, which I think is also like. Yeah, it's, yeah, so, I'd say yes, I think that, that, that's a, that's a factor. And, um, I think that that can be something that we consider after we do some planning and take you about like a twenty-five, twenty-six calendar, um, will look like.
And, you know, I don't want to sound great to them, but I'm happy to, if, um, we're systemic racism basically on how and when we meet. Um, and that, that could be something, I just like to unearth that for these people. It's just not going to be on the school board anymore, that's another piece of data, who knows, right? Well, the other end of this, I hope to work with Dave and start kicking some people in Olympia about, you know, payments. I personally need to not draw on payments, e- even though there is a way to do that. Um, cause I, I just don't do office for those reasons, but, uh, so if I do, I do. But, uh, I'm wondering if, you know, paying people for the value of their time, uh, is something that our legislators, I know we're strapped for money on all the fronts. But if they're having trouble getting people on school boards, um, maybe it's time to stop honoring, you know, the value of people's time.
Yeah.
That we would like to attract.
Yeah, one hundred percent, um. Yeah, let's, uh, maybe, uh, we can even add as a board discussion, um, and, uh, next meeting or depending on how the agenda shakes out. Yeah, next meeting or the meeting after, definitely worth discussing, um, and important, um.
So maybe that's something, um, the other thing about our community, there was an attempt. So if you have a board member, for example, you have to be a citizen of the United States. And I was actually talking about that issue. And, um, a couple of years ago, those people actually introduced to, um, if you become a permanent resident, you could, so you're going to have to be a citizen, which, you know, could have a big impact on our communities, we want the good vision that we have. And so actually I'm going to, that, that bill, that bill came easier to die a couple of years ago, but, um, when we have, um, probably one of the most effective groups for, uh, getting it going would be Home America, which is, they're very, they're very effective. Five, and I know they're for that bill and we're going to actually be their executive directors, the dual language celebration that's going to happen. I was waiting out at the, uh, community center, I'm going to actually, uh, start on this topic, I was sending the executive director that. If he is there and is sitting kind of cranking that all back up, um, that would be really helpful, uh, well, I could pass that. I know the, it's, it's a difficult political environment that we're in with immigration now and that, but, you know, anyway, it's, it's definitely worth that. That will be another element of helping to improve our organization, so.
Yeah, we did, and I, and then I want to kind of reset our back on the calendar, but we did look at P S E S D, um, last year, um, and did quite a few things. Um, uh, in hopes of supporting some more proven efforts and, and wish you all, um, and at the same time, we definitely have more things that we could do. While we're also continuing to balance like our, um, time capacity. Yeah, uh, okay, so definitely we'll add more commitment to a, a future board meeting. Um, let's just kind of reset our back on the board meeting calendar. Um, yeah, what other thoughts do folks have? I know I personally liked the new board structure. I really like the, um, work sessions where we have extended periods of time. So really, I, I found all of those so just really valuable to understand more, to be able to really kick around a lot of ideas. Um, so I like the lengthend of that. I know it's made our regular meetings significantly more work also, um, just in that thing.
I guess the other thing, uh, that I've been interested and heard from other, well, watched other boards do this. So in terms of connecting to the schools this week, I mean, by now we have one meeting, uh, that you're in each school. But what other districts do is actually go, for example, at lunchtime or something and, and go, uh, have a school show or, you know, basically they're doing it for Bravo. And you can actually sit in lunch and, you know, with the pocket students and, you know, another way, it's a, it's a different way of connecting to the schools that I think would be interesting.
Like as a plus and four, sure.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you can do it as, you know, if you don't, if the meeting structure becomes, uh, or notification, I mean, you can do it two by twos or, but I know, yeah. I think boards do kind of go in a collective group too as well, so there's different ways to do it, but, you know, it's, it's a, they're way to kind of work. And, you know, it's, that's the potential way to also meet with our parents because, you know, there's, you know, in the morning, the parents, uh, show up and deliver to the students. I mean, there's some, some opportunity to interact there, so maybe, yeah.
I'd, I'd be interested in a, in a board town hall where it's more of a listening session than a talking. We, we don't do the talking, um, I know through the period when COVID was on and after that, there was a real sparse sense among students. When I was coming to visit civic students and also the, uh, Black Student Union. They just felt like they were sending signals out and it wasn't being, uh, returned in a two-way communication cycle, uh, from the board, things that they wanted. And it, it can be, the answer can be no, but it should be explained and I can accept the no. I understand how you got to that decision, but they literally were feeling like they were shouting into a black wall.
Yeah, I, the, I've been, I've done this six separate times and one of the things that I tried to do was to, to take their, uh, ideas and then, you know, a month or two later, write back to them and tell them, here's what I heard and here's what's, you know, some of the things you're doing, some of the things you're not doing. But yeah, that feedback is, is really important. And I think the other part of going out is, you know, it's a whole thing of going to where people are rather than taking them to the compass. That's, that's the other big thing, which is like going to school during school time or something is the going out to where, and then parents show up there, we're going to sleep and so.
Do you envision that replacing or being, um, a part of a work session? Or I guess what would that, how would that fit into the structure that we have for, would that replace something?
I would think of, I mean, I would think of that as probably a listening work session.
So.
I mean, we cut back the number of, of work sessions, I mean, in all the number of things. So I might, I mean, we could think about, it depends on what we have to do, but there might be an additional.
I'd go for one more, just, yeah, just if that one gonna happen.
So one of the things that we, uh, one of the other goals that we identified that is still kind of being fleshed out is really thinking about, um, establishing two to three, uh, specific mechanisms for gathering community input, including, um, potentially all, all different things, but that's a goal that you're working on, uh, thinking about the components to. So it sounds like maybe that could actually happen a little bit in tandem to think about what, what might we need to add, um. What might we need to add um as a part of our regular board meeting. Schedule or calendar um that might help us meet the objective within our goals. Um and the little suggestion of things, they're only the time of all, that's kind of a great, I think we should probably do that um.
What was the occasion? They've got two hundred and fifty people down at the Foster High School.
It was the um.
There's food involved, no.
Yeah, the the family gathering that they did, I mean, we've we've done, that has always been successful in the past, we get that. You know, food, childcare and. And translators was the three big things, if you do those three things, you know, and you do good communication and work with liaisons. You can get a lot of people, you've done that consistently over the years, it's just that we don't. We do it and we stop it.
Don't want to pull away from telling that purpose and its success. Whether there was a half hour in there as part of it, that we're available sitting ready. And there's, you know, few chairs set up and and parents and students will come. You know, feel any questions, I think that'd be valuable.
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to be, we said, I mean, the. I mean, when I when I asked uh Mr. What, you know, the feedback was, you were talking about communication and so. A lot of the feedback that they get as part of their natural process was helpful for us.
Yeah.
Period, so.
Nice.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so definitely something to think about, about how we might infuse some. Opportunities to visit schools um. During the day to talk to students or more of a listening course, as you said, um. Okay.
Can I add in, I'm nervous about asking them to do a presentation unless they're feeling compelled.
Oh.
Something, I don't wanna put more bricks on a drowning person. I want to keep them afloat and. For the visit. I I like to streamline and win, or doesn't put the.
Yeah.
Maybe student center too.
Yes.
The way their researchers have done, they go, they would go visit something that the school wanted to show off that they're doing. For this and kind of presentation, it's like observing things that are going on in the school at their faculty or something. And then, I mean, it's the two things, they were very just. Simple conversation, you know, what do you think is going on in your school, what do you think is not going on, you know? So it's not, it's not a big, I mean. There will be some work, I'm sure, to kind of coordinate all the activities, but there's not like a presentation.
Kind of makes me wonder if there is a way that we could actually um do that. In combination with a work session, and I think that would be a question to kick back to. Um uh Devin Conti as they're working on the presentation calendar, because what would it look like to go to a school and say, you know, we're gonna foster a school today and. Watch, yeah, go observe our classroom, and then we're gonna have our two-hour work session after that hour and really dive into what we just saw or dive into like. Some components of. Uh actually, uh the chief of that now are actually working on instructional rounds. And part of it is, so instructional round where we, like the leadership team here goes and visits schools, but we're also looking at. Doing at least one or two community-based rounds, right, or. And there's a whole article around that, like when we take the community in, being led by students, all of that. That takes a little bit more work and coordination, but I think we could do like one elementary and one in the high school and this year and experiment with that. And that class is similar to call where it's more inclusive with board members, maybe a few partners. Um but we just have to believe in current schools, um because you're right, it's a lot of work on the schools, just making sure that we're really preparing the schools. And not only that, but they are um involved in leading the work and telling us. What they're, what they want to showcase us for us versus us going in, and it it has, it's a, it's a, it's a collaborative process, right? It's it's really um the full leading us and telling us what they're working on versus us going in and looking at it like, so. You know, it's a nonjudgmental format, it has to be nonjudged.
Yeah. And I think is important is yes, student center, but I don't want the principals to feel like.
Yeah.
This symbolically, it doesn't look like there was an invasion today, but at the school board, they took over and turned everything on its head. So somehow or another, just still give some sense of, you know. The principal's still kind of in charge of what goes on in their school, I don't care if that's just introducing us. Or what it is, what it looks like, and see it, whatever they want to do, but I don't want them dispatched to the corner. Feeling like we just showed up, move over here, they are.
Yeah, you know, it has to be a, they have to be part of the design of the board, so. Process and protocol, but it's it's very, it can be really intensive, so we don't, we don't want that either, so. So I guess I I wonder, kind of hearing all of that, it sounds like it might take some more intentional planning and thought. Before we're able to really put that on the calendar, I mean, it's it's possible that we might could do it before, obviously, we have to approve this board meeting calendar. It might be that maybe this year we plan some of those opportunities that maybe are more to board members at a time and then get. A little bit more comfortable with what that process might look like, um systematize some of it, and then maybe the following year, we can actually embed some in our calendar. Just a thought, um, cause I want to make sure that we gives, you know, for so time, we're, there's so much transition happening right now. And just so much having our obstacles also looking overwhelmed, also the administrative team, we're thinking about how does the bathroom, a lot of, you know. Partnership and preparation help that.
So I'm gonna do a yes and, uh because I don't think it's. A bad thing to go in twos, but at the same time, um in my own book. Just a stake in the sand with our schedule, pick a quarter and say we're gonna do. One listening session with the full board here, maybe two, the elementary level or whatever, you can call it around or whatever you want to call it. Work towards it and see if we can get it done, and then if we get up to the edge and it's not possible, then we'll just adapt. You know, but it seems like it might come to the world, it gets measured, gets done, so if you put it on the calendar, typically it happens.
Okay. Um. Okay, definitely something we can explore, yeah, okay, what about the work sessions, uh Saturday sessions, we talked about those versus Saturday?
My life is flexible, so is everyone else.
Okay. Okay, I definitely want to get Director Proctor's input, I'm sure Saturdays can be a little bit more tough. Um so maybe I can do that between now and next meeting, we've got. We've got time, a little bit of time for this, um again, it's August, right, where we have to approve it.
Right, I think you guys will be looking at it in the July twenty third.
Like the actual calendar itself, right?
Right, so the actual calendar and the presentation.
Great, um, perfect.
And just remember, you guys do have a. Adopt a school. As part of your policies.
Okay, yeah.
Remember.
We didn't do that, we haven't since I've been on the board, so. Okay, well, we can look at, I know there's a lot of policy work happening over the summer, um so that can be something we. Um. We've analyzed if we'd like for change, uh if we felt like we can have a, it's in order to approach uh to to that.
So for the neuron. What is a doctor's school?
Yeah, it was. It was just each board, so we have five board members that talk schools, so it was, I mean. It was supposed to be kind of the the school's um liaison to the board, if you will, but. Uh the problem a little bit is. You know, kind of we all, it depends on how we that recording is, and we all want to hear all of it, and so um. Yeah, I'm I'm not sure it ever became particularly effective, but that was the original intent of it, was to have have one board and be kind of the conduit to. Yes, to reach school.
And then they had like teacher meetings or?
Whatever, it was it was pretty wild, whatever, I mean, some people, I think, yeah, there was at one point, people were going to like staffing, which. I don't know, I don't know how you kids meant that, but that sounded a little bit too far, you know, getting down into the. Micro managing thing, but so it was, yeah, and that's why I think it was a little. Yeah, it became a little tricky, I mean, everybody had a different view, it was pretty shit, it would be, and so.
Okay, we've got to sell it on me harder, I I don't want to be the liaison, and it doesn't have to be the one in my district either. Uh but it does feel like.
No.
We drop in and try to communicate as. What I don't want to turn it to to turn into is like Microsoft skip management.
Yeah.
Right, and I don't, I don't want to.
Right.
Come in and go tell us all here, dirt and laundry and stuff like that, and we'll look back and.
Right.
Advocate, but on the other hand, it might have on the fly, pick up a few items. Our normal channel was to feed it to the superintendent, maybe we'll report it at a meeting, I was there.
Right.
A few items stand to the superintendent, but I don't want, I don't want to start interrupting people's lines in terms of what their jobs are. Responsibilities are.
Yeah, I think something else to consider is like, you know, going back to the conversation we're having before about board, um you know, really how we can make this a board that other folks are. Able to join, want to join, um I want to be mindful about what we're. We might put in place between now and sending some of that information, um that just requires more time from a board member. Um who, you know, I think we all give what we can and that looks different for everyone, um based on our own. Um, you know.
Right.
Life and everything else that's going.
I think that's my only comment, listening to all of you guys here now talking about it, is there there was no way. You know, when all four of my kids were in school, that I can give the commitment that this board requires, and if we've already scaled it back to this year. You know, it's it's three o'clock, two o'clock, one thirty, Saturday, these are working time. So the working class, you know, not everybody can get it off, this is as often as needed to attend the meetings, even a five thirty meeting. You're off at five trying to get here about five thirty, it's just not possible, you know what I mean, so it's just. I hope that when we do say to talk about this more, we kind of have to consider, you know, who we're asking to come up here. Right, and be on the board and then make it feasible for people to be able to do it, you know what I mean, to get in there, I mean. It's it's difficult, I mean, it's, I think. Each of us are, you know, blessed in the position we're in to be able to do those things, but even I can feel the strain, I have kids in it now. But running the business and stuff, I have that pool. I'll try to get on to to the different things, and so I couldn't imagine if, you know. Depending on your mission, you're, so I just want to kind of, let's weigh that, I mean, we're, what we're asking, thinking of what we want to do, you know, and then who we're trying to. Ask to come up here to fill these shoes.
Mm hmm, yeah, I don't know from. Washington Association that we belong to, or maybe a national one, maybe there are, you know. Gold gold standard type schools who are our size that are doing really well in those categories and what what is their, what are they modeling this or something? That we could just like look at it and go, you mean at this time, these days? You know, is Tuesday awesome, or was this, you know, who wants to be on a Friday morning, right? And so it's like, have we got the right day, have, you know, you know, are others firing on all were pistons? And have really diverse wards, and what are they doing, is it different than us? Then we can have data, if it's not different, then that's not, that's not the essence we need to make, what are they doing that they're engaged? And recruiting more members. Across the demographics.
I'll just add, um, I think my, for people, for example, I talk to families in the dual. Um, language advisory board, you know, difference in other groups, and and some of the things that you talk about are changes, right? The other thing is if they're kind of promoting diversity, many of our entities are running the world, so language access also has to be part of that, not just language access here. But language access for the materials, right, so one of my experiences when I went to a big national meeting, I actually met a Spanish only speaking board member. From Boston, and she had a translator with her, she's still on the board, so that's the thing, a little thing you have to consider. So cause it's not just about diversity, but it's about authentic diversity and representation, and then what are we going to do? And also considering, because you all know too, it's not just being here present, there's a lot of studying and homework, I call it homework. There's actually work behind that too, so there's, there's all these things we have to consider, it's not, it's about the work. It's about your time, but it's also about being able to have meaningful conversations, and so that's what that's probably what we could talk about. It will really come about diversifying, even just having one bilingual person, you also have to consider language access in that as well. Okay, I'm gonna move us from the board meeting calendar conversation, and we'll have another time uh in July to talk about it some more. Um and then we'll also have some intentional time, uh probably not in July, but depends on the agenda, how the agenda shakes out to talk about board improvement. Um that's definitely something that we can um begin to talk about, even um kind of formulate some plans outside of the. Uh okay, so last here on our board discussion is the T S D anti-racist statement, which as you all heard um from uh Alex. Uh this was the work of the student, uh the superintendent's student advisory board. Um, thank you all for your uh work comments. Um, and it was very timely, is as a part of our goal that we were talking about too, when we met, um it was. Really making sure that we adopted an anti-racist statement, um so great, what thoughts, questions, um do folks have? Um it, this is uh on an action item to be approved this evening, um uh. So that's kind of the the hope, and um I guess one of the questions I had is that if we did have any, knowing that the. The board is done, we have no last meeting for this year, if there were any adjustments or updates that we wanted to make. How would that land with the group and what process would we want to take us through uh to to do that?
Um, I feel, well, we do have a Google Classroom, so I could still reach out to students remotely, if there was like any changes we wanted to make. And the process of publishing this for a school district, so that could be one way. Or early next year, then I believe we're gonna start a meeting like. Once at the beginning of the year, I think, around September, so that could be like one of, we could prioritize that for our first meeting with any early options soon.
Okay.
So yeah, I wonder if you can do that.
Just sort of check out before folks offer any changes or.
Yeah, I really sort of find that wouldn't change anything.
Okay.
You think it's great?
I have only two thoughts, if that's okay, um and they don't. We don't have to agree upon that, you don't have to make the changes, but just a few little ones, so I guess I was looking at, so the second sentence. It said, we're committed to fostering an anti-racist school environment, which means actively and intentionally educating ourselves on different races, or different cultural races and histories. I think my kind of work came up for me when I read that statement is, like, that is a piece of what it means to be an anti-racist or create an anti-racist environment. But doesn't necessarily feel like the definition of an anti-racist environment, and so I was wondering if we could even just add, which means in part. Actively and intentionally educating ourselves, so just adding those two words.
So like more specifically defining what it means.
Well, either we're explicitly defining it or just adding those words, because then I was also thinking, really, you go on in the statement to say, this is how we're gonna do it. Or these are things that we believe will contribute, and so I was also thinking maybe even adding um that sentence. Below are some specific actions that we believe will help to foster the same type of racist environment, and they go on by challenge, brand assumptions, let's say, that's perspective, it's fostering empathy. Um and then the rest of the statement.
Yeah, I agree, so do you mean like. Um making it more specific to the district they've been interviewing or?
Well, you've got the things written in there already, I think it's just calling it out a little bit differently, and I should have typed it up so that it would make more sense, but. So um second sentence, here's what I'm projecting or proposing in the end. We are committed to fostering an anti-racist school environment, which means in part, those two words are the addition.
Yeah.
Actively and intentionally educating ourselves on different cultures, races and histories, and then adding something like. Below are some specific actions that we believe will support in creating an anti-racist environment. Because that's what you're doing, that's what it feels like is happening in the paragraph below.
Yeah, I feel like it would be a good change to that.
Okay.
Question, just uh in part or to start? Is that what I'm gonna dig in first?
Well, I, uh, let's see.
I know you can have the other part about more details.
I mean, I guess that's a question for Alex and the group, I think what I was putting, picking in part is because. It reads as if we're gonna define what an anti-racist school environment is, which we don't, which is fine, I don't think we necessarily need to, but. Actively and intentionally educating ourselves is part of what creating an anti-racist environment means, so I was just.
I I can go either way, I just, it is sort of a starting step, so and and then have it at the end.
Are you?
Not a kind of question.
So. So, is the purpose of this discussion, that's what I'm getting purpose. For the board to adopt this as the district's vision statement? Or is the purpose of the discussion? Cause I believe, so I'm thinking about student voice, or this is the student's statement from their perspective. So that's what I'm trying to figure out, what's the goal of the input, is it to? Adopt the statement, is, cause what my vision was thinking, just to share what I was thinking. Is that we still have to develop a policy procedure, take the student's statement as they defined it, cause this is their voice, their experiences, their input. Using that as a statement that's standalone and as a student's statement, right? But then have the overall district vision and statement in alignment with that, cause I still think that's the board, but I just, I bet I don't know what the purpose of the. Conversation is in terms of this, so that we can just be clear, because um, I was curious about what the goal is. I was under the impression that we were, and we were, that this was being drafted also just to become our T S D anti-racist statement.
Oh, I see.
And if that's, if that is a misunderstanding on my part, then on that we can. I, I guess otherwise, rather we need to vote on it necessarily.
Yeah. We definitely talked along those lines at the last time we discussed this. But I also don't wanna. I agree, we shouldn't. Start words within our students' words if we have, if we feel differently.
Well, I don't think it's about, it's about changing what they're saying, I think it's. See. I think part of valuing voice is also. It's not just saying, this is great, let's approve it, right, I think it's about. Uh, having space for dialogue and also can like. Centering and uplifting, right, which is what we're doing, we're taking the entire statement, I think it's reasonable. That we offer our own perspective as well, because we're all also a part of this district. Um, not to, not to undermine or replace the work that you've done, but to add to it. Uh, I guess that's kind of how I see it, um.
I mean, in that spirit, then I think we need to. Count, count these as suggestions, and then it's up to the student senate. Advisory board, we started with a.
I think that depends, for me, I think. It depends on what we're doing with it, so my, I think, for example, those students would be honored. And I'm not gonna speak for you, uh, so I want you to have your voice. I think they did a lot of work on this, but through. I think they would be honored if this were the district's statement for anti-racism, and in that thing, then I think. Having was part of our whole collective, and they were the driver of all of this is great, just being really clear with the purposes of what we're doing, because if that's not. The intention of this conversation, then I think the student favors the family own. And then, right, but I'm all that, I want.
I am kind of saying that it was gonna lead to that anti-racism saving for the first. Well, yeah, completely, like, um, agree with your suggestion, so like I said before. I think like, well, I can speak to you after the meeting, like, I can. And I, well, now you have the platform and see, when those students are available to respond, and see what they think about it, and then you can move on.
That's how I read it, I think, was when it started, the Takula School District believed, firmly believes, that to me kind of gave me the impression that that's what. Y'all are willing to, to, um, thank you, um. I just got one other thing and then a question for Dr. Pajosa, um, so in the second paragraph. Uh, I think the third sentence, it says, we'll create safe spaces for students to share their experiences. How would we feel about adding staff to that, um, just an acknowledgement that staff also experience? Racism and the impacts of systemic racism? Okay, um, and then, uh, lastly, I just have a question for you, so Dr. Pajosa, I mean, there's a lot that's in here, um, uh. And, um. Do the things outlined uh, feel attainable to implement? They're definitely, they're actually in alignment with the work we're trying to do, right, with the goals, we have the six, we have six. That we've identified from all the work we did, Dr. Rogers already laid them out, uh, ahead of the budget meeting. About the alignment with our policy and procedure work, we have six, uh, in order to striving to be an anti-racist district, we have six goal areas. That we listed that we're gonna outline for the next two to three years, so it's not a one-year thing, it's a two to three year. Uh, and I think, and I believe all of these align directly with all of those goals. Yeah, and if you saw the goals, we, we got them, so, yeah, so I think they're in alignment with the goals of professional development, student voice. Um, disrupting racist practices and actions, reviewing policies and procedures, like it's all there, right? Creating safety, something that's not in here, but I think the correlate is the positive on the flip side, is disrupting bias discipline. Which is not called out here, but it is called out in the opposite way of creating a safe space, systemic racism. Uh, create safe spaces for students to share their experience, and that, you know, all of it, it's. Yeah. Both all connected to that, uh, so it's a bit of a more positive affirming way, cause that's what vision should be. But, uh, but we have the six goal areas that we're looking to, in terms of what we're drafting, the policies and procedures, so.
So, uh, I'll revisit the purpose, this is kind of kind of the vibe of board, we. Want to be in alignment with each other, I don't mind when he starts out with that first sentence, cause that's. What, that's what the two goals school districts do, they're not planning through this typical school district, so, to me. With whatever changes the students want to adopt that have been suggested, this is their, their work, and if we. In creating or adopting this and making our own statement, if it's practically word for word, I, I think that's fine. But we ought to say, we ought to give a tribute, the same way we did an author of a. At the byline, in collaboration with student advisory board, we come to this statement.
Yeah, and I don't think we would actually take any credit for it, we would say our student advisory board is the, our anti-racist statement, but now. The district has adopted it as our.
I just wanna make sure we didn't. Oh, it's ours too.
It's very. And I think that's what Alex spoke to you, that was the intent of him doing this work, so that our board would adopt it as our district anti-racist statement. Um, yeah, and just, yeah. I'll make sure to clarify the community or the purpose of this conversation, it's right. So. You guys did a really good work.
Thank you. I do appreciate that you guys are giving suggestions, now it's saying, oh, it's good to go, like, it shows that. You guys are really careful, especially in terms of how it will be implemented and so, yeah, I appreciate.
All right. Okay, so we can decide if we want to, um, actually, uh, we can do it for sure when we get there, but. Um, next option is we wanna run this past the group, and we can bring it back for adoption at our. Okay, great. Okay, thank you, um. Okay, moving on now to our questions only presentations, uh, beginning with a monkey financial statement. One more thing. All right, what additional questions do you folks have?
Yes, I mean, I had a whole series of questions, looking at grant, they were, it's gonna be. One that, that I look at a lot, and so, um. This, this guy, I mean, I guess I just, I mean, the answer to all the questions is we're working on it, basically, and so. The question I wanna, I mean, there, so there are comments in here that. Sound like I'm not actively reflecting what's really being spent out of them, um. You know, excuse me, I mean, for instance, the whole, you know, society grants, you know, that's, that's not even supposed to be. Used for school improvements, and should be, you know, budgeted at the beginning of the year, and then applied, uh, and so. What, what it sounded like you're telling me is that, that process just didn't happen this year. Yeah, and so, so I guess, to me, that's kind of fundamental, so. I guess I'm just looking for the statement, that's something that's gonna be a fix.
Really hard on this year is not only in the goal of the budget, but it's, uh, so being very, very intentional.
Yeah.
Um, and having clean data.
Yeah.
Uh, so that we can kind of reset as we're moving forward. Uh, and then working closely with the schools throughout the next year, so that they understand their budgets and what they're looking at, and that we're. Completely on top of, uh, the grants spending appropriately, um, thanks to that nature of.
So the principals again need some training and, and budgeting.
Yes.
And thinking about all that stuff upfront, and then putting the appropriate costs in as they go, okay, okay, I mean, that's. I think that's the most, because basically all these questions are, you know, at the end of the year, kind of, kind of, I need one year. And that, it gets to one of the key findings from the, the E S D, um, about, you know, how we got here, and one of the things is. The board was not getting that kind of thinking and authority, and so, as, as long as. You know, you're on top of it, that's, we need that should affect it, then, right, right.
Now, there always is grant, not that you're in, so I will say that, you always have, you know, maybe something happened that you weren't anticipating, or. You know, so there's always a certain amount of, of, but not, not to this.
But, but there's no, it's a lot of stuff which is coming through the year, absolutely should be completely sanctioned, yeah, yeah, right.
Go ahead, just ask, um. That, what does that look like, magically sprinkled us and all of a sudden all the principals are trained and understand? Or is there like some policy?
It will be a policy. It's just a really a system of visits, um, sitting down, going through their budgets, making sure they understand what they're looking at. Um, making sure that they're planning accordingly, uh, with the funds that they've got, so it's. It'll be a lot of that next year.
So it's like a monthly process, you can kind of keep training wheels on, okay.
Yeah, so this one, this report, it took, it took us, there's a couple of problems that need to be added, like, and this report takes several years. Maybe get it at this point, but, uh, we need to, yeah, we, I think as a board, we need to be watching this fairly closely at this.
There is something up in that report that needs to be done as well, I noticed some things, as I've been working through these reports, and so, um. Like I said, it'll be much clearer next year as we, as we start to get fresh, so.
Which then obviously like the, the knowledge of everybody, all the, I don't know, principles, but also, I mean, some of these grants are managed by. Uh, central office people, all of that, basically, yeah, okay, perfect. That was my, my question, which turned out to be about sixty seven.
Easy to answer, though, let's still have my case, yeah. Okay, any additional questions on that one?
My only question was when I saw Dr. Director Lawson's put that out there, um, are these then? Boy, is there no getting, is this money then we're not able to access, or how does that work for if a grant was, we were given the grant? And now we're at the end and we don't, the funds weren't spent, how does that?
Yeah, in some cases, we could have potentially moved, moved the money if we can't identify the, the resources, now I can't just move. Any dollar, because there's, like, all strings attached to some of these funding sources, and so. It's just going through, and I, I've had conversations with the principals, and so they had a plan, they've sent me their information, it's just now I have to go through the system. My priority has been obviously budgets, um, and working through some of that data first, and then I'm gonna be track in July, I'll. Um, in this area, starting that work, so. Um, but yes, in some cases, I anticipate that we may not be able to send some grants that we received, we're gonna be perfectly honest with you, whatnot.
That is, that is, and it's proven to be deserved over the years, is, on occasion, we have actually given money back, as I said. Yeah, it's tested, and, you know, that's. Yeah, I mean, it, it requires some very intentional budgeting upfront to make sure that that doesn't happen. There is an issue which I, I know there's six, and, and. Um, we're not in that situation now, but if the legislature throws too much money at us.
Yeah.
The organization, most of our school organizations are not equipped to really figure out how to spend it at one side. I was telling the seniors, give it a little bit, you know, over and over years, so we can kind of, you know, absorb it as we, as we go, but. I mean, obviously, when we're fifteen, we have fifteen million dollar hole, we're probably not in that situation now, but, but it is true, as. Zero seven, you know, you can't spend this, this money always has strings, all the grants have strings, you can only put it in certain places, but. It does require intentional budgeting and work, so.
Um, all right, next is the twenty twenty three, twenty four financial forecast.
So I didn't, it sounded like we don't, I was looking at the, the saving net dollars, you, you had actually updated that, I see. You're anticipating at some point eight hundred thousand, now we're getting a little more, which we don't know for sure yet, but, so. You captured some of that, but all of them may get a little, a little more reduction in our, in our deficit. Out of that, when we see what it finally can say that.
Right.
So.
So that will.
That'll be updated, obviously, that's fine.
Yeah.
Once we get that awards.
Well, thank you. All right, next is, uh, the financial absence.
Oh, I did, I actually, one of the, sorry. So this, this is one that I, I found out and I wanted, I'd probably get it on the agenda for a, for a session, but. The issue is, um, the general issue is how do we prevent this, you know, what common gathering situation from happening again, and. Um, looking back at, um. You know, the, the fund balance, to me, that's always been the key number, I mean, from a simple board perspective, I mean, can die of all the detail, but. So, I'm, I'm gonna, uh, I think propose, and we need to discuss whether this works or not, but. We have a policy that says, you know, we have a minimum six percent out, you know, in that, um. Fund balance, the question becomes, you know, when do the alarm bells go off, and you know, I look back on it, I mean, as soon as. As our fund balance for any one month dip below zero, that to me should trigger something. Now, what that something is, I'm thinking it should be an immediate evaluation by the CFO and superintendent as to. You know, how do we, um. Get out of that situation as quickly as possible, uh, because, I mean, what happened last year, that I think, I think it didn't let. Go up early in January or February, which at that time, I mean, we know the, the big thing that we have control over as a, as a school district and a board is. Is that made it beat that line about staff layoffs, and so, there was time there. That, you know, we, when I think back, I think that, that we're addressing towards the balance floor and after this stuff. If I was to look back, it's not nearly enough, you know, so, anyway, some, and I'm interested, I'd like to put. At some point, maybe you guys have looked at this policy, it's sixteen twenty two, something stated in there about. You know, triggering whenever, even for one month, it goes below zero, some actions, formal action happens about. Give you a plan from the CFO, and that, here's what we're gonna do to, you know, get this situation under control, so something like that. And if you guys can maybe look at that, and, yeah, come up with something good, I assume. You know, everybody is interested in kind of like, we need to, to make sure that this doesn't happen again.
I think there could be something in addition to the policy that we, um, in, in, invented the, the one handbook. So that the board members come on that, you know, maybe this budget feels overwhelming or daunting.
Right.
Um, there are some kind of quick snapshot things about, these are the things that you really should be looking at, and here's kind of the. Rain, or you know, some, some like the oil lines that help support, really being able to look at it with a strong preventative lens, yeah.
Our fund, that fund balance, that's a very absolute key number, is it also, not only does it. Um, indicate things going to run with the budget, but it also directly impacts our bond rating. You know, which we got downgraded again because of that, I mean, it's just the kind of thing, and something that, you know, does not require a lot of, um. Accounting background, but I mean, and where they still put that number, if something's wrong, and you need a report, so.
They're really like, you know, something just having automatic place that if, if this comes up in a month. These things happen.
And actually, it really should not happen, if, if the, it's very fun, I mean. It'll happen now for us, and so we get out of it, and once we get out of it, it should never, if, if the money is being managed properly, I think it should never happen.
Um, in most cases, I, with small districts, it's a little bit more difficult, now, right up among the, June is an example. Because our portion of payments aren't equal. June is the lowest month where we see, we boom six percent, and so, I, it's very, very common for school districts to go into a negative fund balance. For that particular month, it's because of the way payroll hits.
Okay.
Um, and so, I want to be really careful with just immediate, here's. With just immediate, here's something out and and everything else, I think we want to be really intentional and say, we would expect to see a moving dip. You know, in this month and maybe this month, um and but being, making sure that that communication is really clear as to why.
Yeah.
And we shouldn't.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, also, the June is after the major team.
Right.
Anyway, so there's, you know, it's limiting about how much we can do with that that one, so anyway, yeah, any wording like that we can.
Yeah, okay.
So it'll be clear that when you have a budget that allocates according to the revenues that we're getting in. Right, so when taxes get our cash register, you are allocating money at the time when we have abundance.
Uh, I'm I'm not sure I'm clear on the question, this was allocated.
Is your budget flat, will have the same amount across the year, or are you adjusted based on?
They don't adjust the question, so it's just, just make assumptions, uh you know, payroll is pretty, pretty easy to predict, you know, that would, that's going to look like every single month. The one that's a little bit harder is on the um. What I call on the vendor side when we're making payments for the nurse, because that can fluctuate and I'll bring up October as a little bit example, because that's turning out of the parent now risk management for insurance. Bill, and that is a huge, you'll see just a huge spike, uh just because of that one bill. Um, and so it's not even across the board um every single month.
So you have it adjusted based on what you're expecting.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
That's, I'll look at this.
But I do agree with our talk to us, I know what you guys are talking about, but however, I think we need to look at it a little differently, we need to talk about. I have a few ideas about that, because I think traditionally, yes, the CFO and it goes to superintendent, but if I. I always ponder, because I look back at what this chart here, even back to the yellow when we're in twenty twenty one. I don't believe that that's even facts of where our budget was, you know, I see it here on here, because. Early we were declining and that's because of the information those brought from the CFO and superintendent were asking them. Or, you know, to present and be honest and doing their job diligently, but what we're staying here is. We have to make sure this doesn't happen again and if we're requiring the people in the board not doing it, that's a little bit deeper, right? And so that's why I think we had spoken about that maybe in twenty twenty five, after we're getting through this, if we're going to look at it a different way, some sort of different process. You know, that we can help um determine it quicker to see and then get information, I think quicker would be, would be good, whether it's a monthly or or a monthly or something like that. Put in place, it's different, I think it's unique and in some ways, so I just might ask some thoughts about that, I mean, we can sit down, I think. At a later time for a work session, that is very important to maybe the job, like for sure.
Yeah, we'll be having, I believe, a work session or will we have a subject or will it be at some policies? That are being reviewed and revised um right now, um so I know that's been asked that kind of add that way uh to that um. It'll be over the summer, but leaving to fall, for sure.
Right.
I don't want to, it's not just some policies to.
Yeah, it's.
Okay, I don't have some tea or something. Well, I'm just curious, um, and especially for me, but it's simple, the definitions, um. So the second part of the definition for both excused and unexcused absences is. For for participation in the school or district bar sponsor plan, so can you explain for the difference between when a district bar event would be unexcused?
Lots of search of time.
Oh, that just. If it's, it is not going to be often at all, because that would be if a parent or guardian did not approve of them being house in for that. But they wouldn't go unless they already have the approval, the school wouldn't let them go. So if more a definition is established, like stated, something in practice, it's, I think you will never actually see that happen.
Okay, and then I'm also curious about, so there was one of the. Kind of in the understanding the numbers piece, which I appreciate the the insights that you have up there. Um, but one of them, for every three students who take a send holidays, especially December, which will be in January, would those not be excused? And if and not one.
And they would be excused, but the definition of chronic absence is a Kathy Turner showed in this um. It's like graphic page four, it's excused plus unexcused equals what would help for chronic absences, so even if every one of them were excused. If it comes out to ten percent of the year, which is about eighteen days, and then they're trying to hold. So if you go to Mexico for family, you know, it's all family approved and spying and when you're gone. Two days, you are then chronically absent for the year. And if they go for fifty days, but they have three other days, anytime in the year for any reason, they just they get that eighteen, the ten percent mark. So that's why I call it a couple of principles to see if this matches their perception and they say yes. Um, so that's why um on page five, the column or Hispanic, that is our highest percent across the board. And they also it's for that reason.
And then.
Just for the, for the reason of.
Oh, for hitting for eighteen years. For, yes, hitting for chronic absence um marker.
Sorry.
And honestly, just kind of take it back.
Sure.
Obviously, that's a problem, because then students miss instructional time regardless of the reason people for missing instructional time, that may impact their overall learning. Do we have? Information to say, like, let's say, these are all excused absences because their families are on vacation, do we have any data to say? Well, here's how that correlates to that maybe learned loss or learned gains?
We haven't done that analysis, we could, it'd be interesting, we could like, we could do that.
Because I think it would just be curious to know, like, you know, how much do we, how much do we need to worry? About students that are going on a prolonged vacation or celebrating prolonged holidays.
Yes.
Uh, and you know, maybe their family has things in place where they're keeping them reading and they're doing other educational things and so it doesn't. It doesn't necessarily impact their. Uh, I mean, obviously, that's probably in some ways, you know, about what, you know, specifically has been taught, but um, you know, just.
Yeah, and I think I've written that down, I've definitely provided, one thing Kathy did um uh informing of is. Um, when the students, if they're gone for just certain periods of time, they secondary kids, they may miss finals and second and high school classes for first semester. And that personal effect of passing rate, so it's, it's so vulnerable and then for other things too, so yes, this would be interesting to see.
And then speaking of that, so like, I'll I'll take the holiday one, for example, if someone is up for a holiday, specifically thinking about religious holiday. And they miss a final, do they get to make that final up? They do, okay. Would there be a situation, sorry?
I would, I think, sure. Yeah.
Okay, and I would say that's work that I know the school is doing on reading for learning and all those pieces, so there's a continuous conversation around. Making our test, making our finals, um and it's, I would obviously, that's not, that's a national conversation that we have. But I know Foster's intentionally been having those presentations as well about reading for learning, making sure that we've had multiple. Efforts to make a, us and everyone seems much like that, so, you know, I think on that note, this is a little bit of a relative, we'll go down it, but just to name that. As we're thinking about not only the school calendar, but assessment calendar, finals calendar, how are we lining that up with? Holiday calendars um that, you know. That include all of the religious holidays within our district, so that we're not asking people to do something. Where they may not have the ability to, you know, and I think about Ramadan, right, um and so how how can we ensure that we're looking at those things? I think that's another big step in the anti-racist districts, anti-racist environment that we're talking about, um so just another.
I do know that the assessment folks will get Ramadan, right, I do know that, with the assessment calendar for sure, but really, that that's the month uh holiday that moves. It moves nine calendar things every year, so it shifts, so it's not unpredictable, so. The other thing I did this year was provide guidance um for teachers, assessments, all of those things around that as well. And so I know we have to consider all, like, you know, other holidays, that major holidays we have, so I do know that's a consideration. Um, and in in our efforts, making sure that we actually. Give allowances to students, not during those, like, so that means we have, we can widen windows. Um, that's we've done that with already, we've done that, we can widen windows, we can exchange time when kids are assessing, but your morning's the best. Because they're fresher.
Yeah.
And they're hungry, and that's okay, so all those things, so those are things we are considering, you consider, uh can we get better? Of course.
Yeah.
Always.
Yeah.
So this, the one I'm looking at is on page five, we get a chart with. The Spanish students and show up, or and it's astonishing, that's far, far, far more than any other school, so. What, what I guess. We want to get that all, I can say spoken, um principal was providing along with the meeting. Um, and we do notice that his percent of, I mean, page five, is the percent that show alters chronically absent students, the third column, yellow highlight. It's only sixteen percent, so it's much lower than our other schools, but then you look um across to the right. It shows just one student who is identified black, one student who is identified Pacific calendar.
Yeah.
And eighty six who are identified Hispanic, so um it's, what he was kind of surprised to is. Why only one, he was thinking that the numbers might get higher, so that's something you wanted to dig into, is there really just one or just the way the numbers evolve?
Hmm.
Okay, so it seems odd that a whole integral school had one.
Yeah.
Correct.
So that is maybe more of a curiosity to find out more if that is that accurate, but then that means only a hundred and one total, only. Hundred and one total schools were considered chronically absent as show alter, um a great majority, six of them, and say eighty six percent um were Hispanic.
So that, it sounded like that whole um row is suspect, that data.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Because there's. I think we need to dig further on that.
Okay, okay, so this is that data, that we get. Correct, I guess, the other thing, I actually, I would like to sit down and talk to you about. And I'd like to see these these data, these disproportionate data uh expressed in a very simple number, rather than, I mean. You you say it would take a long time, I mean, I can do it in formulas. I can just, you know, put the percentage of students total that they trace is and put it on the denominator and if you have a number on the bottom, I get it, it's disproportionate. And and I think it's, I think this proportionality is really key to, because if you look at. You know, particularly some of the proceeds of the resident equity from years ago, that's one of the key ways you look for. Or you need to to looking for disproportionality, which then leads to the discussion, the street data discussion, the deeper discussion about why is this going on? Why isn't proportion is there, so um actually, I'd like to sit down with things that we can agree on. On what, I mean, I've never been able to get, this 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 proportionality should be really simple numbers. I mean, one is 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 completely proportionate, the best one is uh did uh more than a bow and more than ones is working on and anytime you get numbers. You know, like one point five, one point six, and then they start questioning, okay, why is the disproportioning of evidence and so. Um, yeah, and I don't think we we've gotten there.
I think the thing that's clear to me. Because we've done a lot of presentations all year, right, disproportionate with Latinos in accessing bilingual program.
Yes.
And African Americans disproportionate and Latinos in long term multilingual programming. Um, disproportionate and so there's something, I'm going back to the first statement. There is something happening with our Latino students and I think it's a conversation we can have. Because it's showing up everywhere, so if you have all the data to go, I ready, whatever, it's the same, right? Our our black students and the large proportion of Latinos.
Yes.
Are not accessing what we need them to access and are not achieving to the level, so there is something. Right, it's it's really a good effect of the statement on the anti-racist statement. Um, all of that disproportionate discipline, it was there as well, and then I will also say special education referrals, all of that, so. We have a problem of practice that we have to address and I think that is clear to me. With all the data that we're looking at, we have a significant uh problem in practice. And language is not enough, like, if you can get people who are going to speak the language, but it's also about what are we doing to each families? What are we doing to center belonging, what are we doing so that they see their cultural identity or histories? And the other piece I would say, we're truly uh by little working on the one link we're having. Then we also have to recognize that some of the data is going to take longer, so we'll be patient with the data to, it's going to take longer, people actually start seeing the same. But if they're exiting out of our high school, then the middle school, then they can figure out then why is that happening, the the bill language program then just gets. Right, we do all this work in the beginning with them and they do this work with them, they go, so we have to figure out that piece, so what are the transitions, all of those pieces? So we do, we have to recognize we have a problem in practice, because it's showing up in all of the pieces.
Yes.
And I think um we have to look at all of that, because. It's, there's something missing, I think that's to talk to our families and our students and find out why.
That's where they have street data.
Yeah, the street data, right?
Interconnected, you're, you have to, right, this is a door, the data is a door to why. And that's where to go through, it's your asking questions on why it is.
Well, this particular data, when I look at this, it's actually a multi-racial group, so once it is unfortunate. That possibly, that's maybe disproportionate, that's a good development rate, now the Spanish group is only, it's disproportionate, I don't know, I can question you totally, you know, so. Okay, so um anyway, I just, you know. Multi-ratio has come up actually a couple of times as well, and so what's going on?
I read some of them were Latin, Latino, does that?
I was gonna say, I think it's one name that we do have Kathy Turner on, um so I wasn't sure if we could go in uh for her panelists, that way she can. Speak uh to this report.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I've just been listening, so I'm not sure if there's any specific questions that you want to, you know, to ask or um.
No, I have one more question. It's okay, uh, how the next steps? When we get down to designate a person, so it's like a bullet. Then right underneath it, it talks about a lot, or a person that is covering, I'd say activities for our cuts. From, I mean, constantly through the summer, I'm going to be asking, because that's what the public is asking. Is what's that mitigation look like, where will we find this person? Know that I have worked at many public agencies. State, county and local. And my biggest experience was in the state of Washington, when there was ser- severity cuts. They basically sent people to the governor's office, transportation, the railroads into time and said, at some point, you can't do more or less. So when you, when I see designate a person, but we're losing a person through our budget cuts. I'm not, when I ask this, I say this with empathy in heart. How will we find that person and what are they already doing? Uh, what are we going to lose if we're asking them to do this? Can we know who that, have we identified, we're going to draw this?
Yes, great question, we're working on that, we have to look at, and the same designation of person isn't required to be a person. But each school would need to have a person or people, and somebody who are responsible, so it doesn't get dropped. It might be counselors, it might be social workers, it might be attendance secretaries, we still yet to figure out, since we know it is an add-on to an already busy plate for everybody. How can that best be absorbed and maybe shared, but it's not a designated person in your school.
Because we're like reaching out to the parents, right?
Yeah.
Communicating with a student on a school and stuff.
Right, and with Kathy, in full time, and her years of experience and her expertise, she has been able to dig in much more deeply than. Um, and she really shows up A plus above and beyond what requirements are, so it's kind of a sad heart, you know, we don't get to have her expertise and in that way. Um, but we know still have to say, what is that least expected? And then we have to plan a way, who is going to do that in each school, and then by a part, how are we going to support it? And you'll help guide it, so make sure that it happens and they have the supports and the access to information, they need to be able to do that.
And then, we're dashing out around this, but student doesn't come to school enough. They are protruding from the old days, right, it doesn't get chased down too hard, but we literally lose money, right?
And I know our CFO, um, we could address the funding based on ten seventy one, but we lose.
Well, if you just take one person and they don't show up enough, we lose funding for that student. And we get.
If there was no funding, if there's a certain timeframe where we have to drop a student, that's when we lose funding, the absentee part doesn't like that.
Doesn't get.
No, it's, but it's the drops. And a certain number, that's why commuting with families when they go out of country. Or it's a really important thing, that we want to make sure we don't drop them, because we do have families that go back to countries and don't come back. Too, so that also has to be considered, we lose funding if they won't.
Yeah, I know, maybe they go for two months a year, so, yeah, it is.
Yeah, and that just is just a highlight, and this is on the presentation as well, that typical, the school district attendants manual. There's job descriptions here, and I just want to say, so there there's like, for example, elementary school district attendants, secretaries that are part of the work. Office managers are part of the work, I mean, I'm just saying, there's, it's, yeah, there's other, there's other roles and responsibilities um as part of. Yeah, there's other, there's other roles and responsibilities, um, as part of the work. Not saying it's a perfect mechanism, but, um, and I will also just add, so they, um. She would accept also attended court and then these types of things as well, so I will add that.
It's not only attending court, though, you have to make sure that. You're following the statute for the, the state statute of what is required before you even get there, so. There's a lot involved.
Yeah, we.
Yes.
So. Student goes away for like one year or two months. They have online access to perform on some ways, don't they?
They do have access to certain content through certain platforms the schools have. But it's not, as you know, it's not a comprehensive program, you don't get six periods of content. And it won't be targeted specifically to what they're ready for each day because it's computer. Even when they're adaptive, it's better than not having something, but certainly not as good as having with the teacher. You can adapt to where you're ready at each day.
Of course.
Yeah, I know it's a, uh, an obvious statement, but that's. They, they get something to keep up and they are able to access their smart family state that were being traveled. So they don't have access to reliable Wi-Fi, so they don't always get to, they would like to try to keep up with it. It's, it's not even possible.
So I'm interested in this, um, I'm basically decided running start in the skill center students. I lose our students have assigned one pass, some indicated they don't feel they just needed to come all the way there and foster their own class. So what's the implication of that? Are they failing that fast or are they, I mean, if they're running start students, they're probably. I mean, they could be just doing it on their own, I don't know.
I, I, as Ms. Turner and I have talked about this too, and she could add more details than I can. Um, when if a student is missing more than fifty percent of the day. Which would include if you're two periods of running start and one period at school, you're kidding fifty percent, so you're okay. But if you don't come back to foster free one period, then you're count, then it's official absence. So that's where can, if kids aren't coming back for their one class.
So I guess the question is, should we be concerned about those students? Okay, I mean, they could be just doing it on their own and passing, you know, math grades.
Yes.
But not quite there, proficiency test or beyond, they probably won't pass.
Some will already pass again in the year, but it's a matter of, this is where showing up versus what can you prove that you know they're not the same things.
Right.
And it goes to my point before, but like, are we doing some analysis to say like. Who are the young people that are not attending school that we need to be concerned about? Or who are they because of the instructor, because of they need the mastery to graduate? Versus who are those students that, you know, are, you know? Do we, right, right, really? I don't know, enough to be able to talk, you might have missed a class or two, right? No, I think that's also, you know, young people kind of exploring their independence, right? As they get to that point in their, so, you know, that's some analysis that we're curious to see like moving forward to. Certainly, and I also will say, you know, a process for that on the other side. So there is the process of the school, which actually looks at students who are struggling academically, right? And attendance is part of those conversations. So just sharing at the school level, there's another process in place. We can grab that data to do the correlation to say, okay, of these students who are making it, who's not academically, right? Who are the kids we should worry from this population, what percentage we continue to be worried about? But I will share that there is a process in place at the school.
Yes.
At every level where they have a process where, um, if a student is struggling academically or socially, emotionally. Or even, you know, behaviorally, they have a process where they go through and analyze interventions. They talk and they bring in all that data, attendance data, academic data, social multiple data, they might even interview the parents. So that's in place in schools. And that's where the, I always say, that's where the magic happens, right? Supporting the student and also protects their identities and the struggles and all of those things. So just sharing the process for that, but we can definitely figure out that correlation about what percentage of these kids. Are actually part of those academic intervention processes in schools, we can figure out that.
Yes.
Make sure we talk about that.
Yeah, that sounds like it's more interesting than, than that. We're kind of, we're kind of using as a proxy for spreading, so which is not necessarily.
And it's not the case, right, yeah. It's not the case that every child.
And what we really care about is spreading in school.
Yeah, we really care about struggling in school.
Yeah, yes.
And the, there is a mechanism in place, there's interventions in place. And there's really good people with lots of ideas and thoughts interming and come product selling what to do to support that kid.
Yes.
The magic of all these people in the audience right here.
And Mr. Christopher described something, asked me to example what you do, um, with the data. He said, and he thinks this is the same as colleagues that, specific to Showalter. They do have a team, this fourteen that meets twice a month at least. And some variety of, um, you know, areas that they were, but they all know the students. They bring together their, um, there are specific students who are at risk of becoming chronic absentee. And so that, that's an aside from looking at students who are struggling academically or behaviorally, this is just looking at attendance. And they start doing like a fishbowl, looking at what are the root causes? And then say, what are they going to do? What are some quick wins, things they can do to help the student, um, attend more or to, you know, get back to active activity? And then who are you, which of us are going to do which things to support them? And when you do, they do the whole kind of, um, action plan for the students that they discuss at those meetings. So that seems to be a strong model for, uh, not letting the, uh, the possible barriers get ahead of you. Trying to catch you and get in there early.
So then the question is, what, instead of looking at all these absenteeism? And recognizing that there are certain laws that, that even if they are doing well, it still trigger, I guess. And so this kind of deal with that side of it, you know, what is, what do we be looking at? Does the, I mean, is it grades? Is it, I mean, we've never seen grades before, uh, the board, and that may be a more apt representation of. And then breaking that down like that is something.
Certainly, whatever criteria the board would like to see that we will look at. Whatever type of, and now or future, meaning that you decide is the data you'd like to see for fourteen or fifteen.
Yeah, that, to me, that's not more, it's just particularly the second year.
So, I'm, again, no, I'm seeing, we get lots of reports. And so my question is. You know, not how much is too much, but rather, have we ever looked at all the reports we asked?
Well, yeah.
Maybe some of them are not new anymore, and we need focus on what you're asking. I'm not saying what you're asking isn't important. What I'm saying is, are we vetting these? Because I just feel like we're getting tons of data.
That would be part of the calendar updates that we're doing. That's, that your involvement in the calendaring of the board and looking at the priorities is critical.
Yeah, yeah.
This board, it has to be critical. There are some reports that are mandated by policy, there's some that are mandated by state.
Right.
Okay, good. And there's also some that this board over time has mandated over time. So that's also for up for consideration. What I'd like to see, and we've already started doing this, as you saw, is actually attach the reports along to the strategic plan and the four folders. Because that way it makes, it has meaning, right? It makes sense in general. And then, but we're also proposing for next year is actually aligning one of the school businesses with that work session. So that way you can actually, okay, this is the reporting, this is the plan. Okay, and this is how we're in action, right? So a school can speak to that whole area and what actually they can relation, so that it has a meaning. So it's all connected and has meaning for all of us in this.
I think what has happened over time, and this is just my perception in the last two years, is that, um, the, particularly the previous. In my first two years, like the board wraps or something and then, then you'll just produce a report about it. And so the reports that would be asked were just compounding on each other.
Yes.
And repeating the same information, not fully reflecting exactly what we needed, and we're trying to rectify that now. Um, so that's, that's, that's the work of the board presentation calendar, that they're really working to figure out. How can we shift that back and right size and give a sense for like, what does the board actually need to be able to do our work? And what do we not need?
Administration's recommending back. And we're going to shut you down because I, I, I'm not accusing Dave of saying go fetch a rock. Well, that's not the right color, go get me another rock, right? What's happening is Dave, I've seen beautiful data, he made some new deductions, he gets on a better focus and he says. I, I need this kind of data to see clearly ahead. Well, then as we do that and we drop some of the stuff that isn't useful to us, so they're low.
And my answer is yes, please.
And our real world, I staff, the councils and things, and you gotta, you know, offload some, they won't, okay.
But I say, yes, please.
Okay, all right.
That, but that's why that, so. My ask of the board, the one thing you do over the summer, because we'll get to the policies and the strategic plan update. Reviewing the calendar, the priorities and the, um, information so that we can all have an informed decision. And when I present, when we present, we've got mental hurting on it, we've got feedback from votes. We've been listening very closely this year, hearing what's been useful, what's been not useful. And then, um, then we can move forward with a plan and then stick to it and see how we do. So that'd be good. Now wait now.
Glad to be available.
All right, any, anything else here on this report? Uh, and then also just, Ms. Turner, is there anything that you would just like to brought the app for hearing our conversation? Maybe something that you want to highlight or, um, should I have any?
I just. I just think that we really need to, um, look at those, um, the reasons behind why we have such high. Chronic absenteeism rates and, and really address that issue because, as you said, it's a domino effect. You don't come to school, therefore you're not passing classes, then you become, uh, behind credit deficient, then you're playing catch-up. Then we're paying for students to attend online schools so that it can graduate on time. So I just think it needs to be. Seriously looked at, and this is, our numbers have gotten worse in the last two years, um, not better. Um, and it's takes a lot of work. I mean, it takes more than just, you know, meeting once a month or once a week. It's, it's something that's got to be done daily, so just. I just hope that, um, we can, the district sees how important, um, this is. And the fact that. When we look at this race inequity and we put that lens on there, you know, we have to look at the fact that our largest. Group of students that aren't getting the supports they need are, is our Hispanic population. And, um, you know, we really need to look at that, and this is something that I've brought up for several years in a row. And it's not been, um, not gotten better, so. There you go.
The other thing, the, the, the recognition, I mean, all those things are multi-passed and multi-varied, but. I mean, everybody's access rate is going up, it's other stuff, right? And some of that, some of that, and we don't, I haven't seen a good breakdown of what percentage of. It's just a couple, maybe people are much more, and that's a good thing, but, but it's, but it is more than that. It's, it's, we have to unrate the whole thing to figure out how much of this stuff that, that we have to do something about.
Thank you. Um, okay, next is the summer school update. So you mentioned in your report, Dr. Mendoza, that this, the, the priorities would be still around those budget considerations.
Yeah, we had some carryover from last year in terms of some of our hundred dollars, uh, which was scaled back. And as you all know, because of the budget consideration, so we have to prioritize it differently. And we're hoping that for next year, because we really felt that last year's program would be providing more services. We offer it to more students, so we're hoping that with some careful planning, special title and all of the, and lots of budget. That maybe we can have somewhere between what we have this year and next year, um, to expand. And then hopefully by next year, we'll also offer the summer, um, boards and girls stuff, uh, programming as well. So we have other options for families too, so that's the goal for next year. Yeah, but budget was definitely a consideration.
I guess my other question, I know, you know, I, I know I got an email from a parent, uh, who was kind of asking. So I guess what was the process for communicating the change? My guess is, is that's the, at school level, right, they're communicating with students. Um, but particularly for students who have been used to coming to summer school. Um, how did we kind of overly communicate the shift to this more scaled down school? And how we chose the individuals who we were focusing on to bring into the summer school?
You know, so that's something that we can always reflect on. I actually think that, uh, one of the things, usually in the last two years, is we've used a selection process. Uh, specifically using data and MTSs processes to determine and select students for the programming. And that was the case last year as well, because we have only certain number of slots. So we'll have a student that really needed it. Um, you know, the goal would be that if we can get ample funding, that, you know, any student that wants it or needs it. Could, you know, be part of the programming. Um, but the way it's funded, at least in our system, it's usually lack in title dollars. That actually are part of, and they have certain requirements on how we can, um, offer receipts, uh, put these programs based on the requirements. Of the title plans, so if we use different funds, like general funds, which as you all know, we don't have as much time like we can. Then any student can come, but because it's specifically title, we have to be selected with data in terms of the need of the student receiving. It's the same way with this special education, summer programming, it's called E S Y. And students have to show lack of progress on their I E P goals and throughout the year. And that's the process used to determine if a student is offered E S Y services. So it's the same type of process for special education, some E S Y, um, summer programming. They said, that's called extended school year.
As, as we, thank you for that. As we start this summer.
Yeah.
By comparison, how many people, how many scholars are we serving?
Yep.
And how many are really leaving behind their exalted budget?
Well, so if you look at the criterion here, so the criterion we use for student selection, I'll be it out loud. Uh, we use a student support at the beginner level on a WITA screener who have enrolled at the school after January first. So that's actually a very limited number of students. Uh, we're actually, are less than half of what we started last year, I think it was around three hundred and sixty students. I think currently it's around a hundred and maybe twenty-five, I don't have the exact number, don't quote me. But I know it's less than, uh, what we've had before. When you look at a WITA screener, WITA screeners are level one, level two, level three, level four. We're targeting level one, so we'll have a beginner, so if we talk about, there's still need, right? Um, but that's where we could target because, right, the greatest need in the system. There's a lot of, um, you can debate it on the level now for the other end on the high school level. We actually use the different criterion of recovery credits. So students who are missing credits and need to make up credits, that's the criterion we use for, I think, again, based on need. And that's acad, and this is specifically academic needs on both criteria.
Yes.
And is there any parallel activity families or parents can do to make up?
Well, we're hoping we could actually offer boys and girls, they couldn't get the staffing in place, that was the hope. But I know some of the programming, we're trying to advertise like all of the community events in the area. We've got a resource, um, handbook, they've been advertising as well. So I know there's still some seats left in some of these, but, uh, that's where we're at right now. We try, uh, I think as we ask for the girls about that.
Yes.
Are you sure? You know, this could not be the staffing in place. Yeah. So there's certainly a potential, and so they're actually pre-planning for next year so that we can actually have opportunities next summer, yeah.
As for that, we should respond to that question. Um, our summer school coordinator, this, we've got one of our coaches that's, and our community and family liaisons have been doing outreach to families who have been identified. And then getting those in, those who decline, you look at the next available eligible student. Two would just shot it out, and so, so as you have in your priority.
But I want to be clear about the criterion was, and so, yeah, it's, it's unfortunate because I do, I recognize that there's a lot of need.
Yeah.
In our community, but, um, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, next is the McKinney Vento updating.
We're going to go to parents. And can we also, it's all the work they've done this year.
Yeah, I think, I want to start with that, I guess, um, so I think, do it, it's the E S D. Yeah, I think, I wanna start with that, I guess, um, so I think, do it, it's the E S D.
And we have to keep them committed to the state. So we will see what happens and, you know.
And to tell you, I was seeing individuals over here, I was glad to be able to get enough, because I think you two are a fantastic team, and I'd love to see, maybe I'll put that in the E S D, you recognize a team, because teams, you get much more power and much more students when you work as a team, you know, and particularly since, I mean, the numbers this year obviously are phenomenally, are usually operating at about ten percent, the McKinney Vento students, and now this year we're up to twenty-four percent, I mean, that's just and, you know, I think many guys are just, you know, beating the bushes and getting all the grants to go off, I mean, let's say you did a little bit this year, provided a little bit more, but they still don't, you know, recognize the total impact, and particularly for this district, I'm hearing that this district much higher than the others, but so.
Yeah.
Um, anyway, it's a great job, and we really appreciate their work on this.
We have other districts that, um, we do training for the state. So we do training for data, we communicate data and for community building, community relations is what we did this year for um, on the state webinar, and uh, we have other districts contacting us all the time, asking me, how do we have such a high identification rate? Because even though um, we have a high rate, um, you you have to identify all those students. And a lot of districts have a low rate, they're not able to identify, and I think it's that Marion and I have been here so long, and and we actually, McKinney Vento, our contact does. And they said, okay, well, we we think we can help you guys. I'm like, how long have you been here? And I was like, I've been here seven, and Marion's been here six. And they said, um, oh, the term on national league is two years. Right, okay, and they said, well, what's your identification rate? And we were like, uh, at that time, twenty-two percent. And they said, um, oh, the national identification rate is two percent. We're like, um, they're like, we can't help you. Can you train us? We have different love training, actually Bellevue just conducted through us this past week, and we did some training on our model of what we do here.
Model that we have, a lot of schools are interested in how the Tepola come up with this split model and then have that help increase, which it did, it helped increase the identification rate. So people wanna know, how does that work? Can we do it at a bigger school district? And we were training on how we can work, uh, for Bellevue.
Yeah, I mean, that's what people don't understand, it's kind of like their, but I have to say all the time, I guess, when they have, when they indicate our percentage, McKinney Vento, it's like beginning of the year. And that's when your work starts, beginning of the year. When, you know, the districts that have low McKinney Vento, probably because they aren't timed very far. I mean, that's the thing, you guys have worked really well, and so that's why, you know, the number is so high, and so I'm just kinda, I mean, just maybe a question for the division, how have your two divisions been funded over the years? Because I don't think, I wanna pick those people who say is they don't really fund, you know, uh, McKinney Vento liaisons, you know, at all, so you're having to piece together what, platform, title, and what?
I'm not sure it's a different. There used to be a two-year grant, Joanne Fabian, she was here back here, she was really good about making sure that every two years we apply to that grant, and that covered part of our salaries. Yeah, and what had happened is the last time that that grant went up, um, we filled the, out the grant, forwarded it to Mr. Howard at the time, who was our supervisor. He forwarded it to um, the business office, and they missed the deadline by two minutes, and so we didn't get that grant. So they ended up taking um, taking the um, some of the funds from the A R P one forty-six to supplement some of that, um, some of that salary, but I'm not sure exactly how it's all pieced together this year, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, you guys made notes, so with COVID, you know, a little crazy about, I don't even realize it, and that's that's just wrong, and she, advocate down the way, the state, because they really need to fund these two divisions.
And it's a unique model, and um, and I will say, they, and then, and I'll also say, they are also really key partners, they've and I will say, when I have visited Riverton, like, I feel so much pride, and we helped coordinate this, and we helped build this, and we helped build that, and that's just one area. So imagine what they've done in other areas as well. So I also wanna say, when we were really struggling, one, uh, so not me, I'm just kidding, some of the tracking, we had tracking. McKinney Vento, our, our two staff members, they had tracking, our transportation had tracking. And we were tracking all the kids, we were tracking where they were going, the hotel, where they were passed. We had, we had the tracking systems down, and I knew for a fact, we knew where all of our kids were, every morning. Nothing I know, somebody was filling, knew where the kids were.
So Marion and I, we have, we've, over the year, we've developed like a, a spreadsheet, Excel spreadsheet. And it's easy for us, like, we know, like, we're working with their grant building changes, this is what they're gonna want, information. It's easier for us to um, to have that information on our spreadsheet, and as we um, do our intake forms, to add that into our spreadsheet. Um, so that any, at any time, anybody can come to us, and we can look at our spreadsheet, and it's for our, just for our purposes, because we have to be tracking all that data. We can tell you at any time, and how many students we have, what, what schools they're at, what their housing status is, what their grade level, any, any extra things, um, any extra resources that they've never referred to. When we've done Spirit of Giving, has that family been contacted? Because that's added to the spreadsheet as well. But we just, um, we are on top of that spreadsheet, like, and then, and then we do print the seat, the seaters, um, the O S P I M B a report, um, at least quarterly, and review it by our numbers that we have on our spreadsheet to make sure, because occasionally what happens is if a student was, um, was, had multiple years of name, even though, um, their, their dates may overlap, which causes an error in the seaters report. So then we have to go back and make sure that our Skyward has the right information reported, that it can communicate with O S P I report. So when they pull it, that information's there. So everything we collect, we try to be as accurate as possible at any time giving, so that we're not scrambling. Someone asks us, what's your numbers, or how many other communities do you write, how, what services have you guys provided? Or are you looking just at, manufacturing this spreadsheet, take a look at, you know?
So has, has any legislature ever come and seen you guys work? Okay, any?
I mean, we did a lot of training.
We did a lot of level. Yeah, the kind of Bellevue.
We, we need to, I need to put that on, but I need, we need to get a legislature to down to see you guys in work, because we need to convince them that they need to punch their positions.
And well, and the other part of that job is like, we're not just McKinney Vento, we're fostered here for the district and the building points of contact, and now O S P I says you have to have a building point of contact for McKinney Vento and the district point of contact, so Marion and I, being at the schools, and us being in a smaller district, we're both, and we're also family engagement. Family engagement for us entails, um, actually, um, preventing families from becoming, needing McKinney Vento's. So we have a lot of staff, and we have a lot of families that will reach out to us, because word of mouth, they've heard from this parent or that parent or whatever, that, um, that we may have resources that we can, we can direct them to, to help, to help their assist, and to help keep their lights on, to to help them with, um, different things that they may need, and so, and we have staff, like, I, we have like, like, um, directors that will say, I have a staff member, and they need help with this business, can you, do you have anything that you can offer them to? And a lot of that too, is comes with building those relationships with families, families feel comfortable talking to us because we've been here forever, and they're, we're recognized whole days, and, and we never judge, like, when somebody's talking, because we, all of us are on paycheck away, you know, if, one, one, one catastrophe away from being in that position, if we haven't been in that position ourselves already, so, um, so I feel like we, we're just super passionate, we could talk about.
From experience directly, I was with the Children's Foundation during COVID, when we're trying to just find people who are the rental assistance, and you were like, ground level. And then we got a huge grant, uh, through the state, Hanson County, went to the Seattle Foundation, they didn't take care of us in Skyway. So we raised a big stake over it, and suddenly they said, here's a bunch of money, but you're gonna give a little bit of time, it has to be unfortunate, um, crazy, I live in here, undocumented families, right? Went straight to you guys, you knew exactly where they were, we changed our application forms, so they didn't have to reveal a lot about themselves, and they qualified. And we were, we were paying rental license like crazy, they got out a certain amount of time, it was a huge amount of money, and it's only because of you. And I didn't know exactly until you started talking, but just thank you, you saved a lot of people's lives.
Also, it's not just, I mean, Julie and I do a different job working together, but it's a lot, communities, uh, that we partner up with, school staff. I don't think we would have been able to do what we do if it wasn't the supports we receive through our monthly, uh, meeting that we have, our parent advisory meeting. We have so much support, because we're on the ground, and so it, it's the whole community, the city. We can just, we have a list of people we appreciate at agencies, without them, we get funding, resources available, or collection, things that come, and like, we would like to give you just much, I want to, here's what you need to do, so if it wasn't for the communities and everyone around us that have helped us build this, they could, like, would, would you guys did, you guys leave us, and you know how to get the money out of our?
You, you were the key, and then we just went crazy, because we were having.
Yeah, it's building those relationships in our community, and with, like she said, with our staff, like, our staff, um, they welcome people coming to us, they've known us forever, so like, they'll come to us with families that have, have, um, challenges, and so, um, I feel like, um, and, and I couldn't ask for it ever. I mean, Marion's about nineteen five, so we, we work like really well with us.
I think the one, the other thing that legislators need to get, you're actually saving state money. I mean, would you prevent students, people from buying into all those? I mean, think how many dollars that you prevented from socializing to these, all of them. So I don't know, we should, I'm not sure, when, when is a good time, you think, to have somebody come, let's say, your company's in?
Maybe in January or something, not.
We, uh, we're stopped for.
We don't know how yet, but we're trying to think that.
Yes, I'm assuming, or the subject is set, and we start from January, so they can start.
Well, they've been hosting, they've hosted, right on High Line, School District King, and other folks have come to see what's happening and how we're managing. And we've just also shared, they're really key for us in terms of our, protecting for our enrollment, so they're the ones helping us monitor that. Uh, because of the fact that they know which families are staying or leaving, and that's the population we're trying to really kind of get, uh, I mean, it's not gonna be precise, but they at least have more data to support decision-making, so they're helping us with that effort, those efforts as well, so. Yeah, well, you know, it's like their schedule, if anything happens, Julie and I, you know, just move things around, so I guess we're busy, but we do things when.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't, I don't think it'll take a long time, you just need to kind of just tell them what you do and, you know.
Yeah, so we can, whenever, we can make the time, whenever, we do the same thing when the state asks us, or other districts come that ask us, we, we because we know that.
Anything I can do, starting with you.
Pretty amazing, I, I went to the, the, um, the afternoon, we had the awards for faculty and staff, and a council members, I counseled, told me that you guys were out of backpacks, and so I ran around, hit my resources to find backpacks, and I was right on the verge, but I came in to make sure, you know, that I was on track, came in and it sounds, it sounds like serendipity, but you ordered them early. You, your shipment came in like an hour before I walked through that door, so you were already sourced, you were already on top of it, I don't know. I don't hold the other person any harm, I'm glad they were flagging it, because they did, you know. And I was excited, just go, oh, these guys, you got, you got, it's just.
We have a year of this calendar, Julie and I, I have to go over to make sure that we're on track. A lot of that, it's a lot.
It's really impressive, thank you.
In addition of that, thank you so much.
All right, and our last question, only presentation is, I don't know, law kids, you'll sort. Um, I was wondering, so we're gonna have a, um, an item on future agenda coming up soon, and really kind of talking about all of the different assessments that we do. Um, but for, I think, just at the high level, what is the law kids, who takes it? Um, is it state mandated, or is it something, just a little bit about the, the assessment?
Sure, yes, state test is for incoming, um, kindergartners to gauge how ready they are for kindergarten standards on six domains are listed in that report. Um, and so that's conducted first month of school, and so this is actually data from fall.
And I'm curious, is that a state mandated test, or is it a test that we choose to, uh, have our students go to?
I believe it's statewide requirement, because, you know, all, like, all these districts, everybody, it's just standard.
Questions?
So high performance people that have been physical?
Yes, I've been looking at one, I did talk to Principal Nurtz, because Tech Willa, if you look at the bar graph on.
Figures, yeah.
Yeah, uh, page three of the report, their school data is significantly higher than others, and I said, so what are you doing, what can we maybe replicate elsewhere? But she said, what she knows that they are doing, um, they have, they recruit lots of parents that come in to volunteer to do, um, just, you know, a little mini instruction support, um.
And what, great.
Uh, kindergarten, even in their preschools.
What is before kindergarten starts?
Well, it's the beginning of the year, so this is like from even the beginning, right, right, the starting of the preschools, and, you know, preschool, as you know, a lot of parent volunteers, a lot of parent involved. And she also mentioned that at their school, they do have, um, both recap classrooms are full day. Whereas like, um, as a, you know, comparison, they have two, um, classes that are halftime. So if it makes sense, where they get double the opportunity, they're going to have higher readiness by the time the next year's a kindergarten.
The law can hear, we know, assessment window is September, day three, one.
A lot of times they do, they don't do it right away, the teachers want to get the kids kind of out going in first, you know.
Do we have any, any, and we can have the feed between the Voices of Tomorrow program that's at Norde, well, I mean, those actually come to kindergarten classroom?
Because I just met with them, but actually, my name. So, and I don't know if it was reflection, or, so our numbers were down, were very few students. We had a report that more students, higher, they're actually moving, the higher members are coming in this year from around into our early preschool, so that's a good thing. Um, some other things we're talking about, the Voices of Tomorrow, all of our, so, uh, the state, just to let everyone know, is gonna be mandating that all of our half-day, uh, programs, early during programs are becoming full-day programs, which will be a, uh, issue that we have in terms of funding and space. So those are the two problems that we have to consider, so I think, I can really explain back twenty-six that all of our half-day programs become full-day programs, so that's just something for us to address, and that we have to think about and top of that. And we have, you know, if, if we can look at the correlation, if that is, is, is fully programming is a, is a great marker to get ready for kindergarten, and that's great. But it doesn't solve our space funding issue either, so just wanting people to know, and just, we're gonna be problem solving that. Uh, I'm gonna meet with, uh, we're gonna plan a meeting with Voices, uh, tomorrow, probably around December, with the data, with the space, it might not be an issue, depending on enrollment. But these are all things we have to consider, right, at all of our schools, because Tepola already has that program, but Cascade U does that, and they have space issues. We have to talk about all of that, so down the road, that's gonna be our conversation, twenty-four, coming back, and readiness, we're going back twenty-six.
Yeah, yeah, brings up a pretty significant faculty issue. On the Tepola, I was like, really, that's all, preschool, and, and, who hires primary schools, do not.
Yes.
I will say that the, the overall average of fifty percent, the, if you compare that to the state, this, uh, student, percentage of students that are meeting all states of the criteria, the statewide average is fifty-two, so, you know, whenever, you know, we get state average, that's pretty good, I mean, and you know that a recap program, and the other thing about these, um, You know, whenever, you know, we get state average, that's pretty good, I mean, and you know that the E cap program, and the other thing about these um. The preschool programs, it's there's a rating system, the state needs to uh measure the quality and. You know, the one, versus the one in Casca D, you know, I guess half, half day or something, is consistently rated as the highest among the highest state, so. That's good, there's, I mean, good work for them and, and the fact that Casca D, you know, jumped up considerably last year is, is also something to note if you're almost up to the state average, so that's nice job there.
I guess one other note that was surprising to me is just, I'm thrilled that these kids who came up through. Have a little bit high scores in the social area, that thrills me because I didn't think that was the case.
Yeah, it's, it's always been true over the years, we've looked at this, the map is always our lowest one. Which, you know, at that age, the question about, nobody challenges something like that, and so. You know, that's something I want to think about in, in the preschool programs, the other question which I've asked and I don't know, never, never to see this, but. You know, what percentage of, of our students, you know, get um are in, of these kindergartens are in a quality preschool program? We don't seem to know that. It'd be nice. Because it may be, our problem maybe is, you know, getting, and it doesn't always have to be our preschool program, it could be something in the community, uh but.
That'd be interesting to see that, that when we can, like, survey, the, the survey of families.
Yeah.
When they enter kindergarten, because all the, every time we enter kindergarten, you know, we have a time for families to commence early start. The part of that is, in fact, the engagement and conferences is actually part of, is part of that process, something that maybe the question someone has.
But I mean, this, you know, probably learning over and over studies essentially is the absolute key and the foundation of students when they're going forward, so it's really. Requires us to pay a instant attention to this and, and take these numbers.
Last thing was, I want to say appreciation for page five, the gendered thing that you have in Gender X listed, even though. It's less than a tenth, you still can't have any um percentage there, but the fact that it's there is important, um and also just, it's a, a. Really amazing that we have uh parents in our district of students that are this young that are able to identify them down here and parents that are honoring that. Um so that's just makes me really happy. Anything else here? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so to our action items for this evening, uh the first is the approval of the human resources staffing report. So make the motions.
Seven.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, obviously this is the biggest ones reductions that, you know, we've seen in this way, in twenty years or something, so. What's a couple of things? And I think, I think the question would kind of answer, I mean, some, not all, so this is like, there should be eight positions here. Uh back in May, the estimate was we would be reducing forty two, so obviously there's a certain amount of these positions that are going to be hired for because. You know, we, the position might still be needed and so, uh I think the current estimate is ten, you're saying, you know, higher than ten of them.
Yeah, and Aaron Geron, he's our preferred district, uh what that, of those ten, we're also looking at uh some that are being. Those are not necessarily three call positions, those may also be positions that are being backed though, like, these are certain boards, the highest. Direct into the law. We also have uh some positions that are currently contracted through staff agency, primarily in special education. And so some of those positions are currently, again, contracted and so the decision we made to convert those contracts to direct hire because the position is still being needed. But again, that other layer is we're waiting for enrollment numbers to stabilize.
Some things are retired, just.
Yes. And so we call that attrition, resignations and retirements. So the list is not all uh due to non-renewals for production reports.
It just doesn't go, which isn't just. I don't have any questions.
My other thoughts were just as far as um the exact what's addressed, so I, I'm still. Hoping. Now we're not going to do the contracting thing, that we're gonna hire full time staff, you know, so I just wanna, I think we kind of leaned on that. Over the years before, I think, pre, after, before, and so I'm hoping that we're going to go the other way and actually keep people and hire them versus doing that. So just to kind of, as we look at our budget, from what they can think, to be sure we, I know we have to stabilize it and I'm, I'm, but you know, I'm still. Not clear on why we chose to go that route, but I just want to make sure that we're not gonna do that while actually gonna hire people.
I can answer that.
Please.
Okay, so one of the main reason why we would choose to hire a contracted agency hire is because. That person has specific skill that we are not able to find for um as a direct hire. And so I'm thinking of an audio levels for students receiving special education. Uh that person has a very specific ESA endorsement, educational service uh associated endorsement. And is qualified to teach that specific uh need to the student and. Uh we aren't able, and it may be on like less than one point of our contract as well, so that will be one reason. Another reason is that we have um specifically mainly in the classified, you know, like paraeducators for students receiving special education. And we are not able to find direct hires for those positions and so we have gone, um we've hired agents for those, but. As our numbers are, um as we're stabilizing our uh workforce with uh the enrollment and with the funding model of have. Uh we're finding that we um we won't need to do that, and that's, that's greatly.
So.
But that's the why.
Yeah, and my comeback to that is, are we, where's our professional development, where's our upgrade, the people that we already have, why don't we pay them more money? To do it versus bringing somebody else, and so that's my only kind of comeback, so I'd like to see how we uh. How HR can assist in identifying people that have good skills in this area, that we can train them, pay them more and get them to be here and be more valuable here.
We've got. Yes. We're doing some of that.
I guess. This is good.
Because we've got some training resources that we have, and we have people that uh we're working, we have worked with student teachers, interns, and so we are doing that. Uh I know that, uh and we actually are, are, you know, we can share that information as well, that we do hire some of our interns. You know, people that are working in our schools or, and we have opportunities for people who are currently teaching to add endorsements. So that they can be on, so they can be the S L P. It's supposed to be all of these positions that we aren't able to find directly, so.
Great. So this list is by my count, I don't know how accurate this is, it's seven people, how many total, and we start with? Financial system.
Four hundred four total direct hires.
Four oh four.
Yes.
And then we're reducing by fifty seven. Okay.
But we're hiring that.
Yeah, we're hiring that.
Okay.
So the net is down to forty seven.
Forty seven. Four to seven. Okay.
So it's over ten percent. And ten, twelve percent, yeah.
That's what I'm trying to get to, some that we talked to legislators, it's a lot.
As long as the positions were after funded, right, that funding source is no longer available.
That's if we talk to our federal, if you're interested about that too.
Well, we talked about the overall operating budget, well, fortunately, there's, we're talking about eighty to four hundred percent of our overall budgets, so just to have that percentage and only talk to both.
I know that they can do something directly, but I, I know for me, I, I cross paths with Adam Smith and his staff frequently. And they are really interested in this, I don't know what they can do, they aren't gonna be able to reverse Esther's things because of the conditions that brought them different. But for to just, instead of the long slope cut off, I think that's probably the main instruction, like people have easy clients, so these things happen.
It's not like, it's not like we didn't know this was gonna happen either, it was just.
True.
But still, yeah, forget. Um okay, so for the actual approval, I just wanna, wanna acknowledge just the heaviness uh of this um uh approval today. Um all right, so all in favor of approving the human resources staff report?
Uh all right.
Okay, next is the approval of, thank you very, thank, next is the approval of the superintendent contract.
Second.
I'm gonna assume no comments or questions, we talked about it earlier, so all in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Yeah, um okay, next is the approval of the food services contracts. So any questions to Stephanie?
And I have a question, I just, I mean, we have a kind of a fact that this is significantly different from what we have already, or is it basically just, I mean, it's something, they're the same organization, but it's either. Case and factual in terms of change and such, what?
Uh it becoming uh CFO, so no significant changes, although I think they did uh uh oppose vendor uh. Which is a little bit lower than actually the current, so um they show the references, um and, and so the contract should be a little bit less.
But my understanding is uh the uh Trevor is not in here, it's gonna be somebody else from Charles?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, any any more? Okay, uh all in favor of approval?
Aye.
Um okay, and then as discussed earlier, we're going to table uh action item D, uh so that we can get those adjustments to the advisory groups, um and we'll turn that back in July.
Do you need a motion?
Uh do I need a motion to table?
Yes.
As well.
Sure.
So much, the table.
Yeah, certainly.
Okay, thank you, so we're doing some visuals, great, all right, so that's sufficient people, uh next is um action item E, approval of out of state travel request. For the annual national association for education, homeless children and youth conference in Orlando, Florida, over fifty, pre-ten, four, three, four. We got a motion?
Yeah, certainly.
Okay, questions?
As wide as possible.
Okay, all in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye. Um next is approval of donation uh for a kind like middle school.
So moved.
Yeah, so I know.
Again, yeah, um. So this, I mean, for those who haven't been, this is the middle school, and those folks who's been, that have actually been doing this for a second. Been giving money to turn that for several years and so um. You've been a nice, thank you, I think before, it wasn't one, one year, maybe this year.
Well, we can have something, I'm actually proud of that superintendent too, so we can figure out something to do.
So they, they over the years offered for different, different things to families and some of that, but. It's interesting, they're, they're doing it for the pocket talks in terms of the translators. They're kind of curious because they know there's a whole bunch, there's a bunch of people that turned out that got pocket talks through um. Donors' shoes and so it's not like, pretty much sure we, I mean, this is, the, the idea here was to have something when, when the asylum seekers came in, particularly the ones of the. Um Angola, I think, that were speaking Portuguese and nothing, but we didn't have any Portuguese connections, was to have a way to connect and I'm just kind of. Curious how we're handling the.
I'll give you all of that information.
Okay.
I'll give you all of that history, so um we actually, uh we piloted pocket talks in the fall or for night. Um I think the donors chewed, they got additional more funds. Uh we, the reason why I wanted to pilot is, so I just want to share why, is because of subscription licenses that cost. There's uh technology infrastructure that we have to ensure that's in alignment and there's also, also, I, I, as a M L O person, trained person. Just want to make sure that all of the translation tools are used appropriately, so that was one of the, those are the three reasons that we said, okay, we're gonna pilot this. But as you know, things happen and it grows and movement grows and we also got actual hub uh publicity uh around the pocket talks in Seattle, huh. So with this, uh we are, we are monitoring this and I just want to say that we also are aware. Too, that other schools might have this request as well, so there are some costs we have to talk about and if we can continue to get donations, great, but there are actually long term costs associated with this. Which is why we were kind of like, okay, pause, but this is the donation and it's in kind and so one of the things we did have. Mr. Coyle to do is to include the cost of subscriptions and all of those other things as a part of that, right? Because we said you have to, you can't just buy, you have to consider all of those pieces too. And we're also mindful that as this grows, we might have to consider that for other schools as well, so this is something we're talking about. The last thing I'll add is I also told Prapati Hum before she left and uh she was very gracious and her theory, and very guarded on this. Is coming up with a guidance document, not just for pocket talks, but for any translation tool in the classroom. Uh so we have that document as well and then also to think about training to really support how we use this with fans, students, and because what we don't want. Is this to replace the people, to replace instruction and to replace, replace actually student cognitive thinking. Around how to translate material from that, but we don't want to stop the cognitive um magic that happens when they're conversing and translating and things like that, so. There's a lot of caution too, we're having, not just this, but any translation tools, but we do recognize it is something that's pretty acceptable. I saw it happening with some classrooms, but, so there's a history, uh we can, we're gonna put in the fall, so we have two guidance documents, one on translation, resource materials and tools. And we have one we have AI guidance for the district as well, so uh we already published that out, but then we'll watch that more because we, like I said before. Our students need to be ahead of AI, so we want to make sure we have appropriate guidance to support features in the classroom as well. And what the professional development team is doing, and that's part of the world that the teaching learning team is doing, is using, not making this stand alone, but infusing. This information in ZONE PD, uh for the year, because it's not just about this, it's about how do you use AI in science? How do you use translation tools in the dark, like that's the goal, how do we start building that up? I know that's a big lecture on teaching, but I just want to say that there's a lot of work that just got behind these little pocket talks. And we have to monitor budget wise, I want that caution detailed as well, so we're monitoring that as well.
I just wanted to just really think, um I, I have a pocket talk that I purchased myself and then um. I have, I know some teachers that have pocket, and we, they run on the wifi, so on the district, um bring your own device. It, I can run it off of that and it doesn't need a subscription, so I don't know if all that will work if you have to.
Yeah, yeah.
And then just another comment, uh mostly on the um video coverage by the television station. I don't know, it seems to get people running up to me saying, wow, this is cool, I'm really stepping up and doing a lot, first sideways for students, etc. And the weirdest one was the most agent staffer at a rugby game just the other night. Running over saying, I just can't believe how much you guys are doing, so our reputation was sky high, it was already high in my opinion anyway, but. Uh with lots of people who don't do that.
And I would say the teachers are very innovative, they're kind of thinking about, that's why the expansion of the pocket tax, right, they want them in the class. Right, with so many valuable students, we understand the need, that's why we've got each of this guidance, support and training among schools. So curious about, so specific wording in this says the duration for solo stretchers are purchasing pocket talks, you say you. You say you talked to Principal Coyle about, make sure that in the subscription, does the, does the, does, do they know that? Uh, and can we amend that, can we ask them to amend that word? So it's not just a purchasing of the pocket talks, but the.
I think the.
Operationalizing, we, we communicated that. So are you asking us to change the language? I'm asking like, if we approve this, i- and that word is in there, are they gonna come back and say that we weren't following what we had agreed upon? What was approved if it's used for some spirit?
Well, you put that, that's the end of money. I, I think their, I think their intent was to use the relationable pocket talks, I hope that it's specific enough on that it was purchased of, or I guess the ongoing subscription.
Says, let's have the largest, you know, we're too much about that word, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. Uh, all right, all in favor of approval?
All right.
Hi? All right, and lastly is the approval of the donation from the Allison Foundation?
Second.
Um, any comments, questions here?
Yeah, I just recognize, um, Stephanie Ardon from the teacher at, um, uh, come back, who worked really hard on this, I think for the grant, and I've got it done, and she's, I'm sure the students will get a bit from the science materials, and she's a great science teacher already, so. Yeah. Yeah.
All right, all in favor of approval?
All right.
All right, this brings us to our, uh, second and final opportunity for public comment this evening. And so if you're joining us online, you would like to, uh, the public comment, you can use that raise hand function, you can open a little chat. Um, anyone here, let me see if it hasn't, you're welcome to do that, okay? Maybe so. Still no, thumbs up, a raise hand. Okay, well, um, then we will proceed to adjourn our meeting.
One second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you, everybody.